Please join us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's switch the room around. Okay, roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Okay, adoption of the agenda. Any additions, deletions, or changes? I have one addition. It's just close in memory of Glenn Allison, longtime Brisbane resident, recently unexpectedly passed. Any others? Entertain a motion?
No move.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, have an operating menu. And first up, presentations. And item A, we have Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Betsy. The rest of the story. Sounds like a quote from Paul Harvey.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council. Tonight, in the words of Paul Harvey, and you were right, I'm going to tell you the rest of the story. The budget is the beginning of our story with the plan for the fiscal year. The CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, is the accounting of what we did. But before we get started on our CAFER, let's review what the CAFER entails. As a reminder, all government entities must complete an annual audit, it's required by law, within six months of the end of the fiscal year. We did that, and shortly thereafter, we had it posted to our website. The Government Accounting Standards Board, GASB, tells us what the financial report has to be, what must be presented in the annual report. GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, tells us, has standardized all these statements and tells us how it should look. So all CAFERS have a similar format. They all have an introductory section, a financial section, and a statistical section. The introductory section is exactly what it is. The table of contents, the letter of transmittal, an org chart, and the principal officials. The letter of transmittal is probably the most important part of the introductory section because that's management summary of the city for the past year. And if we had applied for an award and been awarded that, we haven't applied for a number of years, then the certificate would be in this section also. The financial section is the Independent Auditor's Report, the Management's Discussion Analysis, with another acronym, M-DNA, and the basic, and then the statements, notes, and required supplementary information. The, we have an unqualified opinion from the auditor's report. That's a good thing. It sounds odd, but it is. But I'd like to remind you that the auditor's opinion is an evaluation of the city's financial reporting, not an assessment of the economic well-being of the city. The fine point. And then again, the GASB requires that the transmittal letter and the M-DNA work together without duplicating information. So I always consider the transmittal letter the executive summary, and the M-DNA is the highlights and summarization of the past year. The statistical section is where you look for trends because each of the pages, or most of the pages, contain 10 years of data. Now, how I read annual reports, and this isn't just the city's annual reports, it's any corporate annual report. I generally start with the notes because that's where you can find some of the background information. And along with that, I read the letter of transmittal and the M-DNA because that tells you what was happening in the city or the company at that time. Then I look at the financial numbers, and then I look at the statistical, though a lot of corporates don't do statistical sections. But before we look at our numbers, we have to discuss fund types because this is governmental accounting. There are three fund types. Governmental, which is the activities that are supported by taxes and grants, such as the general fund, the gas tax, the debt service funds, and any of the other special revenue funds. Then we have proprietary funds, also known as business-type funds, which is our utilities fund and our parks and recreation funds. And these are generally supported, activities supported by fees and charges. And lastly, we have fiduciary funds, which are pension trusts, private purpose trusts, and agency funds. This past year, we reviewed how these funds were classified in our CAFER in the past years and determined that except for the successor agency, they should have all have been agency funds. So they've been reclassified as such. Then about 12 years ago, we had to implement GASB 34, which emphasizes government-wide financial statements along with the fund financial statements. And it also required governmental versus proprietary funds. This is a quick review of some of the differences between government-wide reporting and fund financials. I think the most important is probably the full accrual versus the modified accrual. Full accrual is recognizing a transaction when it occurs regardless of when the cash is received or dispersed. Modified accrual basis only recognizes the money when the cash or cashes within 60 days of coming in or going out. The other thing about the difference, the big difference, is the government-wide, we now show the capital assets and long-term debt, whereas the fund financials don't show that because it's not money that's readily, that's available for spending. Now, some of these pages, these pages are a little bit difficult to read. They don't expand well. This is page 16 in the CAFER. It's the government-wide balance sheet, or at least most people would call it a balance sheet. In GASB speak, it's called the Statement of Net Position. And last year, it was a Statement of Net Assets, and the only difference is the title. And what this means is it's the assets minus the liabilities gives you the net position. And the net position is then further broken down into the net investment and capital assets and what used to be called fund balances. But it's, whether it's restricted or unrestricted. You'll notice on here that we have a negative unrestricted fund balance because on this page, it is on an accrual basis. And then that is because we have the capital assets and the long-term debt. They don't offset. The next hard-to-read page is the Statement of Activities.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you mind?
No.
This goes back to the Statement of Net Position.
Okay.
Which makes things look pretty good because it includes valuable assets like our land and so forth.
Right.
Buildings, et cetera. My question is, what about all the unfunded liabilities? Where do they show up in here?
There are some unfunded liabilities on here. We have the OPEB obligation is under the non-current liabilities, and it's $2,008,000 for the year. And we, the pension is not shown on here this year. It will be shown next year because GASB Statement 68, we've come a long ways in 12 years with statements, is requiring, and I don't know if it has to be done on the 1314 or if it's the 1415, financials have, will have to start showing the actuarial. And there's, the auditors are still working out how they're going to present this information because we take our lead from what the auditors do. But GASB has not, in fact, there was a request to GASB to postpone that implementation, and they denied it. So the notes show the retirement information, but it does not show up on the government-wide. But the other post-employment benefit obligation does.
And then the other big category of unfunded would be all the maintenance and undepreciated problems of the facilities that the city has to deal with. That doesn't really show up in here either, does it?
No, that doesn't, that doesn't show up in total, but your depreciation, your net depreciation, shows you part of what's, what should be being set aside in cash or in reserves.
Except there are a lot of things we don't depreciate.
Right.
It's not going to show up anywhere, right?
Correct. Well, land doesn't depreciate, but all our buildings are depreciated. All our vehicles and machinery are depreciated.
Right. And other infrastructure facilities.
Right. Streets, the roads.
Are we going to move in the direction of having that information? The reason I'm asking all this is that it makes us look, you know, financially so well off, so it's not really an accurate picture of our situation. I mean, this is a way it's set up to do.
Correct.
We're following the rules, so to speak.
Right.
But it's misleading.
Correct. All financial statements.
It's just, the way it is, right?
Yeah, but I mean, we should be clear that
Yes.
we're presenting to the public, you know, what is there? Because people will come back, they read the stuff, and they come up and say, hey, you've got all kinds of dough, you know, which isn't true.
No.
But it sure looks like it.
No, but it does show that we have 40 million in liabilities, that we have another 48 in capital assets. None of that is fluid. So out of the, out of the 26 million of restricted net position, we don't have anything.
Okay, sorry, I just wanted to make that point.
Okay.
Thank you.
I got it. Thank you.
Okay. The Statement of Activities presents the expenses and revenue by function. And I kind of like this statement because it's a different way of looking at things. As we're breaking down, we're showing expenses first, and then the revenues, and then the net. That is page 17. As expected, the program revenues do not cover the expenses for governmental activities because that's your police, your fire, your public works. And that's what we use the general revenues for. And the general revenues are down at the bottom of the, in the bottom half of the page. The, this also shows us that the general fund transfers this last year, 834,000, to business-type activities. And that's the city supporting the programs for the Park and Recreation Fund. This is the last year that we are showing the Park and Recreation Fund and the Marina combined because under council direction, we've been asked to separate the two and move the Park and Recreation programs back into the general fund. And that has happened so that we can track them by program.
Which is connected to the demise of the redevelopment agencies.
Okay, the balance sheet of the governmental funds, that's page 20. The first column is our major column because it's the general fund, and we're all, that's what we concentrate on the most. We ended the year with a total fund balance of $11 million, of which 7 million is unassigned. Compared to last year, that's a $1.5 million increase. The other columns are what we call major funds, the other two, and then the non-major funds. And there are all, all the other funds lumped into a single, single column. On the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance, frequently referred to as the income statement, we see the, then, we see the revenues and the expenses, and our net gain. And it's, the net gain is impressive considering that our taxes and special assessments were down 1.2 million which the council planned for with the departure of VWR. And this decrease was offset by 2.2 million increase in licenses, permits, and fees, which includes the new large recycling business license fee. And staff held expenses steady at 9.5 million by taking a cut in pay, by not filling positions, and by deferring some of the maintenance. After the transfers to the debt service and parks and recreation funds, the general fund had that net income of $1.5 million. Moving on to the proprietary funds, this is the business-like. It's, the balance sheet shows the utilities and the park and recreation fund with the internal service funds to the right of the total fund. The negative unrestricted fund balance in utility is getting whittled down due to the past increases to the water and sewer rates. Then on page 27 is the proprietary Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance. The utility operating revenue increased by 1.4 million, and, but the operating expenses also increased by 645,000. However, that fund had a net income of 1.1 million, which is due to the increases of the water and sewer rates over the past few years. Park and Recreation had slight changes to revenue and expenses, and they managed to cut the net loss in half over the last year. And again, this is the last year that Park and Recreation and the Marina will be combined. Now, some notes about notes. The notes always follow the financial statements. In our CAFER, they begin on page 33. We reclassified, and in the notes you'll find a lot of different things. Notes one and two tell you about the accounting policies and are very similar from year to year. However, we did look at the private purpose trust funds and converted them to the agency funds, and that's discussed in the notes. However, to demonstrate the info that the notes, the information that the notes contain, let's look at note five, the loans receivable. Now, and this is on, I'm not sure what page that's on. I didn't write that down on this. This is just a piece of note five.
Forty-seven.
Pardon?
Forty-seven.
Thank you. Because note five covers over two pages. It begins with a table of each loan from the governmental funds, which is usually the general fund, and from the proprietary funds. Along with each loan, it shows the balance and the changes to the balance. And because many of our loans are equity sharing, you don't see any changes, and the payment will be received when the property is sold. Beneath the table is the narrative of the loans. If we go to note five H, it discusses the former harbor master's loan and includes the information of what the city is due. Now, this was as of June 30, 2013. The loan was paid back in July of 2013 when the property was sold and the harbor master had retired.
Go ahead.
Loans receivable, what you're just talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Back to the first page there, 47. There are a couple of categories again there that, at least in my looking through, we didn't see them quite fully explained as the way I understand them from my role in the oversight panel. I'm looking now at the loans to successor agency.
Mm-hmm.
And even though some of those we put on, as you know, on the ROPS, the Recognized Obligation Schedule.
Correct.
The likelihood of some substantial amount of that getting paid in the near future is fairly low.
True.
And that's not reflected in the
And that's not stated, no, it's not. That will be changed for the following, for this year.
Yeah.
I'll change that.
So I just want, again, it's
It's receivable, we just don't know.
We have all kinds of money coming in, but it's not real.
No, because it's, when it happens.
And the other thing I wanted to ask about is, you know, the Bridge Housing Corporation loan.
Mm-hmm.
Is that ever going to get repaid, or is that just something we carry just for the heck of it?
I think it's just something we carry just for the heck of it. But it's, that's a Fred Smith question.
Yeah, okay.
But it's, I do believe that the thought was, as long as it continued going, it would just remain on the books and/or we would sell it, or they would, they'd get it for a nominal amount.
Right.
But this was what it cost to build bridge housing that the city funded for bridge housing, and they do pay us interest on a annual basis, or part of the interest.
Right. But the relatively small amounts.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's from their excess.
Again, I'm just thinking that a footnote should explain
Okay.
that situation.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's like 2,300,000, and we're not going to see most of that.
No.
Okay, thanks.
And I will discuss with the auditors this year, taking it off the books altogether.
Okay, thanks.
And that's the senior housing.
Yes, it is. It's managed by Bridge Housing Corporation.
Yeah, that was built with the housing funds for
Yes, it was.
long, moderate income housing funds from RDA, so I don't think we could take it off the books just of yet.
I don't know. That's why I'm going to discuss it with the auditors.
Tell them.
That's not listed in, well, this is getting maybe a little technical, but I don't think this particular loan is listed in the ROPS, so
It's not part of the ROPS. It moved with the housing authority.
Right. Right. So it is in a separate category.
But it's included in our net worth as a city.
That's correct.
Even though we
It's not, it's not real.
Couldn't.
Right, yes.
Tell that to the folks that are living there.
That's not real. Okay, the Required Supplementary Information is where you find the budget-to-actual information for the general fund, and it also splits out, it has the financial statements for all those non-major funds, which goes on for a lot of pages. It also shows the budget-to-actual for those funds also. Finally, the statistical section is the trend data. The first four pages are government-wide. And these are really complicated-looking, messy, messy things. This is page 111. What I wanted to show you is what 10 years of data looks like. And this is one of the reports that's on a single page. This is the net assets by governmental and business-like activities, with the last row being the combined total. The graph is charting the restricted, which is the top category, or red, the invested in capital assets, which is the blue middle section, and the restricted net assets, or net position, which is the green section. And it shows that our unrestricted net assets is getting out of the negatives and into the positives, which is a, which is a good thing. Then another, this is page 119. It's another selection from the statistical section that was on a single page. And it's the governmental activities, tax revenues by source. Our property taxes are not back to the pre-recession level. Our sales taxes are stabilizing, but our TOT and our business license tax are doing very well. And again, the business license tax reflects the new recycling business license tax that was passed. And we had a good year. We used one-time revenues wisely, and this is all due to the good long-term decisions by the council. And that's the rest of the story.
Yeah, go ahead, Clark.
You know, on page 119, you know, looking at property tax, and you can't help but watch the news or, you know, read newspapers, and they talk about how the housing market is exploding. And, but I look at 2011, it was higher than 2013. So can you explain why, when the market wasn't as hot, the property tax was higher?
In 2011, the county assessor had, all the, all housing was assessed at a higher rate. They reassessed everything in 2012, which is why it dropped down to 2.7. Not only weren't houses selling, it was, that it was, it was, they reassessed all the, all the housing, all the residential housing in Brisbane for a significant drop. And just because you have a good year, you can't jump it back up to what it was before they did the reassessment. You go back to the 2% climb, which is the maximum that you can, you can grow year to year under Prop 13.
So we could have some fairly robust, oh, it's not on. Sorry. Okay. So we could have some fairly robust sales in real estate, but this will go up kind of on a slower basis than what the market will indicate.
It depends on the number of housing that sells. Because when a house sells, it does get, you get to use the new, that's the new base amount. But it's, the turnover is, you know, we lag a little bit on what gets reported to the county as we're working on past year's information, so it'll eventually catch up.
Okay. All right, thanks.
What about, may I dovetail on, commercial property? You've mentioned residential, but I thought they lowered a lot of commercial properties.
The commercial properties are all looked at. They weren't reassessed. However, an awful lot of the property owners did
They applied, right?
They did appeal their assessments, and
You can see your point, right?
And those take, take a long time, and when they're, when the appeal is finally finished, because we could, it is divided amongst all the cities in the county, so that when Genentech appealed for all of their properties in South San Francisco, we got to share in that. And when
That's kind of what I remember reading in
And when Sierra Point appeals, and if the county loses, then everyone else in the county gets to share in that too, but it's, but it resets things for us.
So it's both, actually both residential and commercial that got re-raised down.
Yeah.
Significantly. But we will start seeing an uptick with property sales and also with the finishing of the Northeast Ridge, I mean
Correct.
But it's not going to be
It's not going to be huge, but
Not going to go up the way it dropped, say.
No.
Right.
It's kind of like gas prices.
Any other council questions?
No, I'm fine. Thank you. It's a good report, Betsy.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I think it's, if I, I think it's really useful to present this document and discuss it in the whole, you did a good job of presenting it, and I think it's the kind of thing that, you know, public should know about.
Correct.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Betsy, for doing it in place of Stewart. He would have had you do it anyway. Got a question from Citizen? Clara?
On the bridge housing, I just wanted to sort of, as a senior, and this is senior housing.
You can go ahead.
I, I saw you, you made a comment saying that don't say something to the people who live there. What I liked about having that up there, despite the fact that it may be annoying that nothing changes, is that as a citizen, I see what the city of Brisbane was willing to spend to take care of their seniors.
Yeah.
And I think that's pretty important.
For the record?
Pardon me?
For the record, your name.
Clara Johnson, 59 Lake, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So that's, I just wanted to say that. I understand why you might be tired of looking at it that way. But if there's somewhere to put it in there so that a citizen can tell that that happened, you know, people have no idea. They don't know what bridge housing is. They don't know what that building is. If they've moved here since that was built, they probably are, you know, it they probably are, you know, it, I think it would be helpful for the, the public to have some way of knowing that that occurred. And then, um.
Could I respond to that? Just, just.
Wait, wait, get, let her finish.
The other thing was about the allegation in the luminary that UPC paid 15% of the general fund in the past, to which I was jumping up and down at home, but you weren't meeting, so I couldn't come down here. And I, I, I thought that was propaganda rather than truth, and I'd like either a, a confirmation that it's true, or if you've read it, know what it said, and, or some kind of clarification for the public that we did not spend, you know, depend on UPC for 15% of our general fund in the years that preceded this one. So, thank you.
Thank you, Clara. We'll answer the second.
We're going to answer, yeah.
Answer the second one first, and, uh, yeah, it is a fallacy on their part, and we're going to attempt to address that in the next luminary under the merits article.
I, I really appreciate that, because I felt, it kind of felt like, wait a minute. This is like, you know, it certainly is an advocacy point of view from the Chambers newspaper that the city helps finance, and I, then, I, it was by the representative of the company, so I guess that explained it. But, uh, thank you. I, I'm, I'm happy, and I think there'll probably be a lot of people who appreciate the clarification.
Okay, Ray wants to address the.
And on the first one, no, I, I totally agree with you, of course, which is one of the reasons I raised it, but where it should be listed, in my opinion, is as a capital asset, not as a loan receivable. That, that was my concern.
Thank you.
Because it definitely is an asset, and it's just senior housing that the city has put together, and a lot of people are enjoying the benefit of that, and I think it's one of the projects that really works, and so I think we're proud of that. But the way in which the financing was put together, there was this kind of arrangement that somehow or other, you know, the Bridge Housing, which was a partner in that, was, was going to be paying us back something over time. And so it's listed as a loan receivable, which looks like, you know, we have $2,300,000, you know, coming back to the city.
I see what you're saying.
Which is not true. So that's, that was my concern. I, I absolutely agree. It ought to be prominently listed as a, as an important asset of the city and important program.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, Clara, and thank you, Betsy, for the report, and, let's see, that brings us to oral communications, number one. I have a couple slips here for that. First one, Jamie Dunn.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council people and citizens, and I have tried not to turn around and see who's here tonight. And here's the reason. For 25 years, whenever a land transfer, sale, use, change of use issue has come up, it seems as though there's a group of people that are really intent on coming here, presenting not just their point of view, but research, a lot of research, taking them a lot of hours, and for some of them, it's taken them a good part of their lives. And yet, I often feel like it's moot, because we have people that come down to city council after city council after city council after city council, 25 years, you get several city councils, and, uh, these things just seem to have been done, a done deal, before the citizens get in here. And it reminds me of something that I will never forget as long as I live. In 1987, after a couple of years of lots of preparation and brouhaha, a lot of money spent, the city of San Francisco, where I was living and working, had decided to have the anniversary of the 50th, uh, the 50th birthday of the Golden Gate Bridge, and they were going to have a bridge walk. Every big shot administrator, every big shot money person, every politician was involved for a couple of years in planning. Lots of planning went into it, tons of planning. The day of the bridge walk came, got on the bus at 4:00 in the morning, went to a staging area, was taken by the staging bus up to as far as they could get, which was Baker Beach, and we walked the rest of the way up to the bridge. And we got up there, and I thought, no, 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 let, let's get out of here. This is a very dangerous situation. Something terrible can happen here. But all these big minds, training, expertise, money, efforts, had put together this event. People were shuffling as best they could, even at the toll plaza, to get onto the bridge for the bridge walk. And I said to Laurie, I said, we've got to get off here. I said, the next thing we're going to see is a person being handed overhead to get out of here because they've passed out. And I was wrong. First thing we saw was a dog that was unconscious being passed overhead. The owner didn't care how that dog got out of there, but the dog was unconscious, and that owner put it up over his head, wherever that owner was, and sent it back all the way across the bridge to make sure the dog was, life was saved. The second thing we saw was a woman's body being passed over the top of heads. And all I could think of was, the next day, that beautiful slope of the bridge would show up in the newspaper like this, because there were 300 some odd thousand people on that bridge that day. In Charlotte Mayard, on a loudspeaker, in the most kind and sensitive and loving and terrorized way, kept saying, "The bridge walk is over, the bridge walk is over, everyone leave the bridge." They were scared to death that 300,000 people were going to go in the drink, and it was possible. And there are people who can say today, "Well, you know, it wasn't a little bit," I was there, I can tell you, it was horrible. What the heck was wrong with all those people who worked on this thing, who couldn't think that the people coming from San Francisco across the bridge, and the people coming from the Renside across the bridge were going to meet in the middle and nobody could go anywhere? But masses of people kept being brought to the bridge, and they kept trying to get onto it. This is my point. Somebody here tonight is going to say something. And you may want to go, "Oh, no, 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 no." I don't want to cast aspersions on you, but I'm saying, this is what happens when you have a direction you want to go in, or the direction's been chosen already. You have to listen to the people who say, "Wait a minute, wait a minute. If the city of San Francisco had listened, the terror wouldn't have been there that day. They would have realized common sense. You can't march people to the middle of a bridge, over 300,000 people, and if you did see the picture the next day, the lovely arched bridge was flat, and all the engineers were rallying, and, oh, well, it, it wasn't that bad. It was horrible." So here's the thing, guys. When somebody leaves their home, and some people leave the national championship at halftime to get down here, to have something to say, they do it because they care about this city and they care about the people here. And they may say something tonight that hasn't been considered, or hasn't been considered enough, and it's critical for you to hear it. You may not, you may not just pass it over because, "Well, we have this plan, we're going forward with the plan." You might as well be marching people onto the bridge. Somebody here, and I don't know exactly who's here right now, but I'm sure that people who have been working on these things for their entire lives are here to say, "What about this? What about this? What about this?" And if those things haven't been covered, if those "what abouts" can't be answered, then whatever the decision has already been made in camera should be stopped. And think about the voices that are coming. When somebody says to you, you know, that doesn't sound, don't shut that person up.
Jamie, we get your point.
We'll see.
In, in five minutes is up now, so.
We're going to see, because I'm going to go home and watch it, and I want to see if you got my point. And let me tell you, it's no fun to get up to make a point. I would have much rather sit at home, watch that game. But I feel bad that there are people in this town that care so much and do so much and do so much research, and dedicate so much to this place to keep it safe and to keep it as beautiful it is, and somehow, somehow, we, we, we march them onto that bridge anyway. Please, don't be so intractable if that should be happening, and don't let anybody push you to do that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jamie.
Next slip I have is Dennis Bussi.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I'll try to make it brief. At first, what I'm going to say tonight does not involve you two ladies, but strictly those three men with probably collectively 50, 60 years of leadership of our community. So now that's out of the way. First thing, a couple of quick questions. Did we get competitive bids for garbage? Because I asked that 15, 17 years ago, when Fred Smith was sitting there, and that's why I have Fred's picture here. Uh, and I was told, well, next time. I'm a small businessman, competitive bids made or broke you. Uh, and the, sorry to say, but scavengers have a monopoly. Two of the scavengers are on our Chamber of Commerce. So I'm just curious, did we get collective bids, because we've got one in our own turf, South City and Daly City. So that's a question to answer at a later date. If we didn't, why not? Because competition's what, in my opinion, keeps things going. Uh, the other thing is, why was there an armed cop at City Hall? I went down to City Hall three, four months ago, and bam, there's a cop with a pack on, and why? Uh, I didn't see anything about it. Should we old seniors not have gone to City Hall? But to bring some humor to this, on national news was Clint Eastwood, at a golf tournament or something, saved a man from choking to death with, I'm not sure how to pronounce it, the Heimlich maneuver?
That's right.
Heimlich. I was dining with our own very Albert Durrell, and I thought I was, it was serious, and little Albert, man, he, you know, Clint Eastwood's got nothing on our Albert Durrell. So I want that on the record, maybe you want to engrave it on a plaque somewhere, but you won't need to rent a cop with a gun, because I'm sure Albert's got a pager, and when there's an emergency at City Hall, just page Albert. Okay, so I wanted that to be known, because I may not be here if it wasn't for Albert, and some of you may wish I wasn't, because, when I get through complaining. So, I ride motorcycles my whole life. At 15 years of age, I bought my first motorcycle and delivered newspapers all on the, on the ocean, in the sunset. Uh, I've had many close calls my own fault. I ended up underneath a pickup truck, hit me pro side, my fault, like 16. I ended up a bus on Balboa Street. I had to lay it down, the bus went over the top of me. And I'll never forget, when I crawled out, the driver just expected blood and guts on the street, and I just, well, I jumped, fired up my Triumph and was gone. But this Visitation Avenue is so dangerous with or without riding a motorcycle, as you all have had to see, people coming up or down, turn over the double line to go to the 23 Club, to the Pizza House. And I've never gotten anywhere, and I hate to say this, I liked Chief Hitchcock, not Macias. It was mentioned one night, years and years ago, and you know what Hitchcock's answer was? I wish Tom, or was here. He said, "Well, the economy's really not doing well, and I hate to put any added stress on the businesses. So that's fine, let me get killed so some guy can go buy a pint of booze and a pack of cigarettes at the liquor store." The other day, had I been younger and had a dirt bike, a Porsche that came off a Valley Drive stop dead. No directionals, no signals, nothing to turn to the 23 Club. Somebody was backing out. I would, engine stall, I was livid. I got goosebumps now, and at my age, I can't fight. There would have been blood and guts. And this guy comes up all pumped up. "What are you, a cop?" So I, and the, the last one, I was coming up Visitation in a car at night, the Porsche was daylight. Car coming down, turned right in front of me, I dropped, I had a dirt bike at the time, dropped it, I mean, laid it down, which stops you. I ran to the car, grabbed the doorknob, and it was a woman and her daughter, scared, obviously, and they were going to get a pizza at Brick oven. So, why can't we just simply put four yellow lines? Correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but you're not supposed to cross over two double yellow lines. Furthermore, going up Visitation, there's that elaborate push-a-button, it talks to you in multiple languages, and lights flash, which none of them work, by the way. I only saw them used once, and when there was a bench outside the Brisbane Inn, I asked all the local guys, "Has anybody seen someone push the button?" And they said, "No." I push it, it speaks in two languages. We should have all 27 languages like the United States consensus.
Your five minutes is up.
So they're no good, huh?
You had five minutes, it's up.
Oh, oh, I thought I had 15.
No.
Oh, well, okay. Well, there's going to be a slideshow, maybe that comes under somebody else. So anyway, I'd like to see something done about the hazards. Take out those lights that don't work as well as on San Bruno, put up a U-turn OK sign, because people can't make U-turns. You got these dumb lights, uh, so if you want to wait till somebody gets killed, uh, that's my suggestion. How do I speak in my second part? Later? There's a slideshow that kindly Michelle Salmon put together, which Sherry has ready to roll. Is that on there?
And that's in regards to what? I, I'm, this is new to me.
The Forgotten Park.
Oral communication.
He just asked that, uh, he could show pictures under oral communications.
Okay.
I do have them if you'd like.
So, yes?
How long is it going to take, Dennis?
Five. Pictures worth a thousand words.
Keep, keep it succinct.
Yeah, I want to thank Cliff.
We don't need the saucy story stuff, just.
All right, for the Forgotten Park, it, by the way, the Forgotten Park, my wife named that 25 years ago. In three days, it will be two years that Cliff started to redo the back park, and it's not finished. And Clark made the great comment when he congratulated Cliff, he said, "What's your next project?" Well, the next project is the present mayor to finish the job. The lights are on, by the way, someone might want to tell the city engineer that's in charge of light bulbs, all the lights come on at 4:30. I guess they don't know it's daylight savings time. All that money wasted. So anyway, the building right there, behind it, everybody goes, everybody goes to the park. I want you to walk down to the building and touch it. Those eight cans of paint have been there for years, back to when you painted the building. So, you could check your records. Uh, there is so much debris on the side of the building that will come up in a fit picture, that's been there for years. There's no handrails. You rent up that building, you know, funerals, weddings, whatnot, at night. There's a ru, ru, a downspout from the roof that's nowhere near where the water comes out. I don't know when the last time anybody went on the roof. I can see it from my house, it's loaded with branches and leaves from the redwood trees. It's, if, God forbid, if there's a fire, and the old people are why I'm here, representing them, they could never get out of that building and up those staircases. There's no handrail. And if you're old, Mr. Miller, you and your wife and all of you with a package, let's pretend we're going down to the community center and see how you do on the stairs. Walk them, touch them. I saw a woman get her high heel caught and didn't go over. That's the water system evidently, that's been like that for who knows how long. I closed it. I think it is the timer box for the irrigation system. And then you might have one, there's stuff on the side that's been there for the longest time. There's a bench from when Cliff was redoing the park, and there's screed. It's just, it looks like hell. If I were to come into this town to open a business, as I've done many times in the past, and were to walk up, come up our main street and see a boarded-up building, which you guys boarded up with plywood, why didn't you think to spend 10 bucks more and paint the plywood? It's not a very good impression. I'm not going to come in to open a business on the main street, you got boarded-up buildings. Paint the plywood to match the building, they won't notice it. So there's no excuse for this, and no handrails is beyond how you people have overlooked it for years. And no handrails is beyond how you people have overlooked it for years. Marie Gilbrick, who you know, certainly you, Clark, from the gas station, sweetest, kindest lady in the world. There's a retaining, that last slide, if you noticed, there's that big massive timber on the left, parallel to the pole. That's pulled away from the wall, and there's probably an eight-inch hex screw sticking through. And there's no railing there, someone could fall into that hole on the left of the bottom two stairs. So I don't know how you could put it off, how you could ignore it. You've obviously known it, Marie Gilbrick's told you, Bonnie Boligoff has told you years ago. Jim Skeels, I mentioned it two numerous times, that was like talking to the wall. So there's no reason that nobody doesn't know about it. You're going to be losing, who's not here, Stuart. I don't think you'll get him back, because once he hits Half Moon Bay, he'll be doing Maverick, he'll be at the airport doing how to skydive. He's a hidden adventurer, it just shows in his smile. You know, horseback riding, it's endless, so don't count on getting Stuart back. And two golf courses. That's it, I hope it made sense, Cliff is giving me a dirty look, but I'm here to back up Cliff. He busted his fanny for two years. And go look at the park now, the weeds are bigger than before because you put fertilizer without telling anybody, and everybody's going. For weeks, they put a ton of fertilizer, which they spread, and never thought to say we should tell the neighbors what the stench is. Well, that's made the weed so healthy to this tall, you could get lost in them. So take a look at it, all your work for nothing. It's the Forgotten Park with the forgotten building, and I thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis, appreciate it.
Randy, it's kind of, I guess this falls under your purview, some of the safety issues, if you could take a look at that, or?
We usually do as soon as someone tells us, sir.
Yeah, okay. Alrighty, that's it. Any other oral communications? Any else? No other takers? Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar. That's all the slips I have for that. The rest are for property purchase, sales agreement. Okay, consent calendar.
Yeah, me too.
Me too. Okay, go ahead, Ray.
Well, Lori asked first.
Okay.
Hey, Lori.
All right, so on the draft minutes of March third, I noticed a few typos on page three. The second paragraph, starting with Community Development Director. The second line, it should read two-story, the word story is misspelled.
There's one I had.
And then on page four, the public comment by Danny Ames, this is minor, but it's just missing a period at the end of that. And that's all my comments.
What do you have on page four?
That Danny Ames' public comment under, after community-wide values, it's the one, two, fifth one down, it's just missing a period.
Okay. I had one on page four also. Ray, what do you got?
I'm on page two.
Go ahead.
Under item C, appoint the following applicants. The only problem there is that it says that Councilmember Lance made a motion, seconded by me, but doesn't say what happened to the motion. So there should be some kind of statement that the motion passed unanimously.
Okay.
Hey, pardon? Yeah, right, there's no indication of the vote. Only that the motion was made. My next is on page five.
Page four, first sentence says Kevin Trent, it's actually, I think, Kevin Tran, T-R-A-N. I believe that's his name. I know it's definitely not Trent. Okay, Ray.
Okay, then on page five, I think the swimming pool was continued to March seventeenth, not the twenty-seventh. And I just thought it might be clarification, it was on page six, under written communications. It says there were no written communications to report, but we probably should add, in addition to those received on the A. Thomas appeal, of which we had a lot of written
Okay. Is that it?
For me.
Anybody else? Anybody want to make a motion?
Approval as amended.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, on to new business. Item A, consider approval of a purchase and sales agreement with South Hill Properties LLC for real property described as Lot One, Block I, near 201 South Hill Dry. Staff report, please.
Yes, sir. I'm Mayor Tem, councilmembers, good evening. I think most of the folks in here will recall that as part of the Northeast Ridge Final Development Approval, they were required to obtain and turn over to the city the former railroad spurs that existed throughout Crocker Park. Some of these spurs have been developed into the Crocker Industrial Park recreational trail, and some of them still remain unutilized. There was a piece below West Hill Drive that was considered for a couple of years to be the dog park until a final decision was made to put the dog park here. Over the past few years, the owners at Shenkey Bakery, which is located at 201 South Hill, had approached staff on numerous occasions and asking about the possibility of transferring a portion of that trail system from the city to them so that they could add a 10,000 square foot addition to their property, and then also install the parking that would be required by that square footage. Those approaches were rebuffed on a number of occasions. And then finally, one of the brokers representing again Shenkey Bakery came and made a formal offer to the city. So the city, at that point in time, had a duty to respond to it. The issue was brought before the council in closed session on a number of occasions. And of course, as council's well aware, the reason that we do real property negotiations in closed session is that you are negotiating a price for a property. So it would be, if you didn't do it in open session, it would be the equivalent of you discussing on your front porch how much you might be willing to sell your house for with the potential buyer standing on the sidewalk. So we don't do those issues in open session, and that's allowed per the government code. Sherry, can I get connected to the overhead, please? Excuse us for a minute while we try to work some sort of magic here. I'm on staff three. I don't have any Paul Harvey lines to entertain you with while we're trying to bring this up.
I can't. Well, while we're waiting, maybe I could have the police commander comment on crossing over. Oh, never mind.
There we go.
Go ahead.
So we are now oriented, this is one of the photos that's in the staff report, and because of the orientation of it, you'll see that north is to the left on this photo. There is a bubbled black line that encompasses two solid lines, and that's the general area of the parcel that's looking, that's being requested by Shenkey to be transferred to them. The building that's got a little bit of the bubble going through, it's the smallest building in the picture, it's kind of down by the lower left end, that is their existing bakery, that's existing footprint that they have here. One of the conversations that we wanted to have, and that we did have, as we were talking with staff and with the council about this, is whether that existing spur had any existing use or any original or any future use. And so as I transition these photos, what I'm showing here is that, to your upper right, there's a label that says portion of city parcel to be sold, and that's what Shenkey Bakery is asking for. Shenkey Bakery's building is labeled. And then there's another label there that says area where continuity of former SPRR trail is interrupted. And what that is, that is a piece of property that lines up exactly with the portion of the railroad spur that we are being asked to sell. And it's a portion that is now in private hands. And it's in private hands, this goes back to the 1990s. Mr. Spencer, who's of course now deceased, was doing an expansion of the building there. The city's requirement for parking required him to obtain additional square footage. And so he actually bought that land, that former piece of the railroad spur, before foremost McKesson could get it transferred to the city with the rest of the spurs, that happened a couple of years later. So now what you have there is this big giant block. So if you're coming from that railroad spur, if you're coming up along the back behind, say Dolby, and you come up to where the first beginning of the parcel that Shenkey would like to buy is, you get to the end of Shenkey's bakery, and now what you have is this large concrete parking area that's usually completely occupied by vehicles. And to give it a little more focus, what you see here is that the extent of that railroad spur ends the next parcel over. So the next parcel over, there's again another, it's a rectangular series of red lines that ends just about midway between that building, and that building is what's at the end of West Hill Place. And most of you probably know that parking lot if you've ever parked there on the weekends, because that's where you get out and you park on private property and you walk out behind the building and you take your kids up to Crystal Cave, or if, when you were younger, you didn't drive up there, you may have taken your bikes or whatever. That's how you access it, through that last parcel. So what this conversation led us to believe is that this little spur that's coming off of here, which is three parcels, two of them presently in city ownership, one of them in private ownership, doesn't provide a lot of access opportunity because of that discontinuity. You can't get to the end of the spur. And of course, even that one parcel that we are looking at transferring, it's difficult to tell in this two-scale model, because you're just looking straight down, you know that third dimension. But immediately across that V-ditch to the west is a pretty significant slope. It's very, very steep, you'd have to scramble to get up it, it's not a place where you're going to put an access point. So considering all of those items, as we went into conversations with the owner and the owner made a price, and then the city decided that what we wanted, if we were going to consider transferring that, is that they had to maintain the existing V-ditch. There is a concrete V-ditch that goes through there, it's a trapezoidal-type ditch. We, I'm sorry, it's a V-ditch that goes through there. They're going to be required to maintain that. We have the access rights to get in there and ensure that that's been done. Also, at the southern end of the parcel that is being proposed and requested for transfer, there is an existing detention basin. We are asking for an access easement to get to that, and we are also asking for an access easement to, for the storm drain that comes out of that, and it actually comes across South Hill there. Couple of considerations, obviously, Shenkey is offering us nearly $300,000 for this property. It's something along the order of like $293,000. So much of the conversation that the council's previously had is what do we do with that? And we haven't solved that question here, because as you'll note in the purchase and sales agreement, there's 180-day escrow, so they have six months to close all of their issues and to affect this transfer. And staff believes that if the council is going to approve this, if that's what you do, we would suggest that you also direct us to come back to you with a plan on how those funds might be allocated. And if you were to ask me this evening, my initial response would be, you ought to direct your subcommittees and your subcommissions by the instructions you're going to give staff to come up with their suggestions. So I think you should start with your Complete Street Safety Committee, because I believe that they are probably going to have some desire to do a bicycle and pedestrian master plan, so you could, so a portion of this fund could be, future decision to be made by council, could be utilized to develop a pedestrian master plan so that you know where your access points are to your trails. I would suggest that you would talk to your Open Space and Ecology Commission, because I think they are going to want to talk about whether this money should be used to purchase open land. And I would also suggest that you talk with your Parks and Recreation Commission. Certainly, over the years, they have done a lot of work. They have talked about creating a trails map and improving trailhead access and so forth. And I would suggest that they would have ideas, so I would think that the council would want to take input from all three of those appointed bodies and take that on board and then make your own decision as to what you would want to do with those funds. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council questions? Do they have questions? Okay. It's not a public hearing, but I have a lot of slips up here. People want to address? I did have two written communications via email in protest of the sale. So council's pleasure, you want to hear from the public first?
I think I have a good idea.
Okay. First slip I have is from Michelle Salmon. Okay, that's the second slip. Come on up, Ken.
Hi, councilmembers, I'm Ken McIntyre from San Bruno Mountain Watch. And Cliff was nice enough to take me up to this area, so I've been over a year ago, and I had not been aware of it before. And, you know, I would have to agree that in terms of its habitat value, it doesn't have much, if any. But as a buffer to the, you know, to the McKesson property, which is going to be turned over to the county parks, probably sometime in the next, who knows, couple, three years, it does have value. And, you know, it's unfortunate, it just dead ends there. I remember when Cliff was taking me over there, and it's like, oh, okay, well, this is, this is pretty neat, this trail, and then just boom, it stops. But, you know, I think that the city council should, you know, be really, really careful. Anytime that you have land, that's the, that's the public's land, that's the commons. When you think about selling it, you know, you're never going to get it back for a price close to what, to what you give it away for. I'm having those kind of experiences, trying to lock away more property for, you know, for conservation. Nobody even wants to hear about it, the land around here is so expensive. I think that if this is the way that the council's going to go, that if you're going to approve the sale, that it, you know, land for land, that the money that's made goes to bring to the city more valuable open space, like some Brisbane Acres, or a down payment on, or of money into a fund to get the Levinson property, something like that. And, you know, I'm all in favor of trails and trailheads. We're working on that all the time. But it's pretty easy to just see that money disappear when it could be going to buy some property. And if you don't have that property, that, that's, you know, the more valuable habitat, you know, what's the point of your trail? Thanks.
Thank you, Ken.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I am adamantly opposed to the city of Brisbane selling this public property. And I've mentioned this before, and I'm kind of appalled. I understand the reasons why negotiations like this take place behind closed doors, but then that it would be agendized without a public hearing is really not good. I'm glad you are allowing somewhat of a public hearing. So when you actually look at this map, and I have actually hiked this trail with Councilmember O'Connell. And you can walk along there, and then we hopped up on the wall and went around the parking lot and hopped back down and went along the railroad spur. It is the only public access to lead you to the trailhead going up to Crystal Cave. Everything else is private there, and it's the only public access that connects it to a public street where you can park. If you look at this map, you'll see that, if you could look where, I drove up there today, too, to also look. And where South Hill comes around, you can park on South Hill, all the trucks do, and matter of fact, there was four diesel trucks up there idling their engines today. And this, this part of the trail connects to that public road, and that's the only public access. And this one little area where unfortunately, we lost the property by dragging our hills and getting it into Brisbane's hands, and it's now no longer ours, you can easily go right around that and hop back on the trail, and it takes you right up to where you can get to Devil's Arroyo, which leads up to Crystal Cave, and also Dairy Ravine and the mountain. The other thing that happens is, so then they, if you do sell it, then the people who build there will want a hundred-foot buffer zone into the habitat. So it's more degraded habitat. And all of this area here that's, that, well, it's hard to point, but all of this area here is, is not developed, and it's foremost And it's foremost McKesson's property that they're turning over to the park. And I think you're about to cut off a really valuable access to the mountain. There is no other way to get to Wax Myrtle Trail that leads up into the state park from, except from here. The only place you can park now is on public property on, on South Hill and hike along here and hop up and go along the retaining wall and then hop back down, or, you know, park on private land. Well, you can't park in their parking lot on a weekday, and not everybody has the weekends to hike. And you can't get to around, this is also the trailhead that leads around the backside of these buildings to take you to the trail that goes up Wax Myrtle, where there's waterfalls and leads right up on into the park. And you're about to cut that access off by selling this property that belongs to the public. $300,000. That's not even one senior staff person's annual compensation. And you're about to give away public land for that amount of money. I don't think it's what you should be doing at all. I'm sorry we lost this one piece in 1995, but we can work around this. This is still a very viable access going on up onto the mountain and to where Crystal Cave is, to where Devil's Arroyo, all the way around to Wax Myrtle. And I do not think we should sell this property. Period. And I'm sorry, I love the bakery. I think they make great, great food. But we should not be selling the public land. This was entrusted to us for the public. And yeah, we're probably never going to be able to make a big transportation corridor on this part of the trail, but it is hiking access to the mountain that's public and has a place where the public can park without parking on someone's private property on a weekday. And I think that we should preserve that. This whole area along here is all going to be donated to the park. So why would you cut off the only access to a public street? The only access to the public street? Why would you cut that off by selling it? That's just not right.
Thanks, Michelle. Next slip I have is Dana Dilworth.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and council members. I wanted to say that I absolutely love Shane Key's products. And even as a vegetarian, I can find their green onion buns, and there's like a couple of products I can have. So it's, you know, I wake up smelling it, I want to eat their stuff. But I have a question is, when did we have the public process where the public determined that there's no future intended use of this property? Where is the analysis and study sessions about other uses or best uses? I hear you've done it behind closed doors that had included San Bruno Mountain advocates that didn't include South Hill Properties Broker being present? Where is the have your say day about Crocker Park, about parcelling out public land and the discussion of ten uses, public plaza, and pedestrian friendly destinations that we get for our other public lands? When did we lose sight that this spur creates, can create a contiguous loop around Crocker Park and that could be future bike paths? Yes, it dead ends at a neighbor's property, but where is the vision for the public's need and public's future use of the public's property? My understanding that this gift came as, in nominal funds to the city, but from lands that had been earmarked for transportation and public egress. This property is adjacent to a state-recognized ecological preserve. And while you mentioned that the county park system was contacted, did they receive the first right of, to purchase the land? Is this something that's open to the public for public, for anybody to come to the city and say, this is the, my intended future use for this property? Where are the analyses of study sessions about the ecological values and impacts? Because I believe this is a really wet area, if I remember correctly. And, and I have hiked it. I know it's a hassle to come to a dead end. Here, back when you guys cleared the metal from the rails, that area opened up, but I think it's totally overgrown now. But the long and short of what I'm asking is, where is the discussion of cashing in on our public assets when there is so much other unutilized business land in Crocker Park? Why do we have to start eating away at the edge of the mountain? Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Next slip I have is from former mayor Clara Johnson.
I just want to say how much I appreciate the comments of Ken and Michelle and Dana. In particular, Dana's remarks, I think, raised a lot of issues I hadn't really thought of. And I think that what she said, although I don't, I'm sorry, but that I'm aware of all the things that have gone on. But I think that she really brings up some excellent points about public process and lack of it, and, and also about, I don't know where you are on the Crocker Park review, but it does, does seem like all of the elements that she brought up are, are something to really think about and consider in this. Because sometimes, I think to staff, something looks straightforward. You know, here these, this has been, these people are asking for about this land, it's already cut off. And so they see it from a certain perspective, not that they're just trying to, not just to benefit one business. I don't believe that's the intent at all. But the, but they're just looking at it from the point of view of, these people are, you know, they, they have a specific use for it, and we haven't used it. And they're just looking at it from one point of view. It's always difficult for any of us to change our perspective. And I think that what has been said by everyone here, I think is, I'd say if there's a real problem, I think it's maybe communicating and allowing something like this to go on and not make it a big issue. It is a big issue. If you want to sell public property, that is a very big issue because you are giving it away as, as Mr. McIntyre said, it's gone. And particularly when you talk about land, it's, you'll never get it back because you won't be able to afford to buy it back. And I didn't, when I, when I came here, I really wasn't going to say that you, that I knew that you shouldn't sell it. But as I listened to the other arguments, I'm becoming convinced that that perhaps is the case. Because if you look at where this is, and the, and the issue that's been brought up about the fact that it intersects with the street, I don't know about this issue of someone going to donate land. I don't know if that's likely or unlikely. But if you look at the lot and you look at where the building is that belongs to Shane Key, I agree, it's a great bakery. It's located in this part of the lot. And what is it they're going to put over here? There, isn't there, isn't there a PG&E easement? Because I drove by there today, and there are power poles just on the other side of the V ditch up the hill. And so I think the utility company has an easement already on it. And why aren't we asking for an easement for what we want to do? Because I think the agreement about access for city employees and maintenance is really quite inadequate because there are no standards to tell future owners. And what about when nobody who works for the city now works for the city, and there's a new owner of the property, and for some reason, that V ditch not only needs to be maintained, but perhaps it needs to be enlarged? You know, I'm not, climate change, who knows? You know, it needs to be redesigned. And I believe that one of the goals of stormwater is to slow down water and is to reduce silt. V ditches aren't very good at that, I don't think, unless you're, unless you allow the weeds to grow. So it slows down the, slows down the water. And it just doesn't look like any need to improve, not just maintain. Improve, make larger. It's really not mentioned in the agreement. And why is it not, why isn't it an easement? And I think the standards for maintenance that you're going to require them to do, there aren't any standards. How are these people supposed to know how to maintain a V ditch? They own a bakery, you know, and it's like, and if they aren't just bakers, who are they? And is this, is this business likely to change? I think, I don't, I'm not as worried about that because I realize that there are only certain uses in Crocker Park, so it's going to be one of those uses. But they, you don't have this tied down as to, as to what it would look like to have them properly maintain a V ditch. We don't know. There's no reference to any EPA guideline, anybody else's guideline of how that should be done. Perhaps it'll need, somebody, will it need a cover? You know, I mean, are we going to be able to, is, does this, does what is written here cover that? I'm not sure that it does. And how close are you going to let them build to this canal? And they can use it for anything other than parking? Is the next thing to ask for a, a exception to the side setback so that they can take the building further into this? And then how will that affect our, that'll be handled by the planning department in the future? And what do they have, are, you know, I've seen situations where city departments did not talk each other, not the city, but where kids were allowed to have a playground on a place where, on a lead area. So it's like you just don't know over a period of 10 or 15 years whether something negotiated by one part of a city is going to be in the records of the other part of the city unless it's on the deed. And that park with the, with the lead in it was on the deed. They, they just didn't check. So I think that, I think that this, it needs to be, if you were going to proceed, that it needs to be tightened up a great deal about specifics on the canal, about making sure that we're, making sure that they know what to do with that V ditch, making sure that, it sounds like everything would be in here about making it larger, but I wouldn't bet on it that we could make the V ditch larger if we needed to. And if you're going to let people pave right to the edge of it, then you would not have that option. And as for, it's stopping the...
How much more you got, Clara?
Pardon me?
How much more do you have?
Not much.
Okay.
And the, if you look at the, at the drawing, it's not a photograph, and you look at the, where this is, that's 45 feet wide, incidentally. It's a 45 feet, foot-wide piece because it's mentioned somewhere in here. And it's kind of, it's, I'm just, I'm not sure it satisfies their needs. I'm not sure that it isn't a great risk to let this go and in the future wonder why on earth we did that. It seems so, it seems like a minor item, but I see why people are so concerned. Because perhaps it is only one of the places where it is on the street. And people keep talking about Crystal Cave. The back parcel is where you go, I mean, I don't go to Crystal Cave, but I go over to that placement, that, where the water is, is a part of...
Wax Myrtle.
I'm trying to see.
It's what?
Basement. The basin that's over there. But it's, so there's actually two lots. It's not, it does go a little further than, than everyone's talking about. Goes, it goes all the way back to the back piece. This is Frito Lay rather than the back piece. What is difference, does that make? It just means that it takes you right to the bottom of a trail right there. And if people, I, I see that there is a problem, but perhaps as Dana said, that's not insurmountable as far as trails and, and the ability of people to walk on a kind of a steep hillside to, to get over there for, for the distance of the current disconnect. But if you made it that much longer, that would be more of a problem because it's quite long. So I, I object to your going ahead when things are in this form. And I would ask you to carefully listen to all the arguments that were made because I think that, that, I think the public deserves more of a notice. I think you should always have a, have a public hearing when you're going to sell public property, public assets. And I think sometimes at the beginning, staff reports, when you do something like city council goals, I know those are the goals. I don't dispute that. I think that you use these goals to justify anything. I could probably, if you gave me your goal and gave me some time, I could give you a thousand things you could do. So they're not very helpful. When you say purpose, it's, it's a purpose of it, but...
Clara, I give each person five minutes.
Okay.
And you're about 10 minutes now, so...
A purpose should be, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The purpose should be more specific to this. What, how does it benefit the city and the people of the city rather than narrowly focus on the, on the internal city aspect of it? Sorry for the...
Okay, thank you. All right. Does anybody else wish to speak on this? Danny?
Thank you. Good evening. And I think this place is like the rainforest of Brisbane. It is truly like the dampest, wettest place, and it is really special. I've gone through there, it's...
Can I get your name for the record? I didn't say your whole name. Give your name for the record.
Annie Ames.
Yeah, okay. It's, because it's recorded.
690 Sierra Point Road.
You don't need to see her address.
So, but have you gone on Zillow and looked at all the available space in Crocker Park? There's a hell of a vacancy in there. Is there a problem with taking some of these mega places that have so much square footage and splitting them? Do we have zoning restrictions that we can maybe, you know, modify or look at and make something more enticing for this business than to give up this parcel? Really? That's really all I'd like to say, I think, on this. Just examine that, please. All right? Try hang on to this.
Okay. Thank you, Danny. Uh, Dennis? Dennis? Beth, I'll get you next.
Good evening, Dennis Bussie. Four minutes. Randy might be able to help me on this, but years and years ago, I want to say in the late 90s, I went to a planning commission meeting. I don't remember why, maybe just to be nosy. But was, but was on the agenda, someone wanted to buy a narrow, long piece of land, just like in this photo. And I'll never forget it because I thought, why would anybody want to buy such a narrow strip and so long? It just didn't make sense. There was a gentleman in the same aisle that looked in gold and suit and tie. And I'll never forget the dirty look he gave me because when I inquired, it was Baywright. And they wanted, Baywright wanted to buy that long, narrow strip, I don't remember the dimensions, for a parking lot. And I said at that time, that's crazy, man. That's a railhead that should be for the people to walk their dog or their kid or me on a motorcycle. It's not right. And Michael Barnes, and I meant to call Mike and ask him to be here tonight to back me up. Michael Barnes said, I don't remember the outcome, maybe Randy can look it up, but Michael Barnes said, we have to keep 12 feet. And remember, why 12? But 12, in other words, I guess they could buy that narrow, long piece of land, but they had to keep 12 feet for the people. Now, I don't know if that's an existing ordinance, but that should be looked into as well. So instead of their 45, if you approve it, and I hope you do not, that only gives them 33 feet. But if you want, you can call Michael Barnes. But I'll never forget it because this guy, just, if looks could kill, and he was representing Baywright. So this long, narrow strip is what reminded me. I thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Beth?
Good evening, Honorable Council. I'm Beth Grossman. So I, when I first read the staff report, I was like, this felt like it was already done. And the decision was made. And I just felt like when, it just kind of came out of the blue and there wasn't a kind of thought about the long-term, about what we could possibly do. And we haven't really made a real plan for Crocker Park at that. And it is an important, it is very close on the border of very important habitat. And so whenever there's a building, then there's a buffer zone that we have to think about in terms of the damage that it's going to do to the habitat that's next to it. And so that's what I'm concerned about for that. I'm concerned about that, once it's sold, it's gone. I'd really like the public to be able to have a chance to think about what we want to do with this land. And as a very, very last resort, if you are determined, and I hope you don't approve this, but if you are determined, that let's think about taking the money that we would get from that and really purchase some other land that would create habitat for, for good. Because the mountain is like, it's becoming encroached upon little by little by little. And I feel like it may seem like a small thing now, but when you add all this together, we'll have no mountain left and no habitat left. Thank you for your consideration.
Anybody else wish to speak on the matter? Anybody want to go for round two?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead. Anything that you haven't said, though? Anything that you haven't said, though?
Yeah, this is actually a valuable wet, possible wetland habitat. There is a lot of water there. It's the first place that a lot of water comes down from the mountain. It could be a valuable water resource in the future. And I just don't think that you should do this. I mean, there's so many reasons to not do this. Water, access, habitat, fire buffer, public land. Don't do these.
And I'd just like to kind of reiterate, when I was speaking, there being other properties available, would even support a variance to do the amount of expansion they need on their own property without impacting the public land. Like people are saying, where the detention basin is, is really precious up there. I don't know if you guys haven't, have been there because actually before the people came in and pulled the spurs out, the cyanophysis, therisiflorus was, were growing up between the rails in that area. It was starting to come back. So if you saw how they bludgeoned the area when they removed the rails and then what has come back, you would know there's a lot of potential along there. And frankly, for a town that claims that, you know, we have this environmental sensitivity, we talk about a V ditch instead of talking about restoring some of our open channels, canals, aqueducts, whatever you want to call them. But basically, returning the basin of these waterways to habitat rather than them being con, concrete lined ditches. And I know that some of the work that Jim McKissick was doing was actually taking and breaking up the flow as it came down on the northernmost side of Crocker Park. And that that should be the, the way that we look at all of the open quote unquote ditches in Crocker Park because it is still frog habitat and it's still actually quite lush. Thank you.
Give us your name for the record, please.
My name is Mark Melby and I work with Kidder Matthews Commercial Real Estate. I'm working with the Shenkey Bakery. And basically they came to me because they would like to, they need to grow. And they've got a lot of equipment in the building they're currently in and to move is expensive. So we looked at other options in the park and then we came back to this. The only reason that we felt this was viable is because of the fact that the Spencer family had purchased the property up the hill. So there really is no access. And when you talk about climbing up on their wall and accessing it and climbing around, that poses probably a little bit of a risk from the city or anybody that's climbing on there because it's private property and it's no longer has an access. But the main thing is, we just want to, you know, expand the building by approximately 10,000 feet. In order to do that, we need the entire property down to the street so we can add the, the appropriate parking. From a standpoint of the monies that will be, you know, passed to the city to have this, the right of using this property to expand their business, there are other pathways that circle the park. And there are frog habitats that have been created down by Cypress. And the city of Brisbane has quite, has done quite a bit to preserve these paths and the natural habitat. This money would be valuable if people were to focus on what you do have to improve it. But, you know, again, it's, it's a tough one because it's the end of the, it's the end of the trail. So once you get up past this property, you run into the Spencer property, there is no more access. There is no more trail. You're climbing over somebody's wall or climbing around something. So it, that's the only reason we felt that it was viable, is that there was this other property in between. You know, as for looking for, you know, other things that one can do with those monies to, you know, add value in the park, you know, I'm sure there's many things that we can do. But, you know, it's, I think the, the main reason that the Shenkey people are looking to do this is it is expensive to move. They love to be in Brisbane. And, you know, the only other options that we could find were in Hayward and South City. South City's expensive, but we were looking at Hayward. So they really enjoy being in, in Brisbane, would love to stay here. Also, the, the ditch that's there has not been maintained. It's overgrown. And we would create a plan, and we thought we have created a plan where it would be cleaned. The city also has access for their people to get in there and inspect it. And, you know, from a standpoint of moving forward in history, there will be a way to make sure that there is a plan to keep the thing, to keep it clean. And from what I understand, even though it hasn't been maintained, there hasn't been any issues that I've heard of with respect to running water or, you know, anything up there. So again, it, once we clear this out and we clean the, you know, the, the canal out and get that, get it clean up there, it will be more easily accessible to monitor. And that's what our plan is. And if anybody has suggestions on how we can write in language into the agreement of how they would like it monitored and cleaned on a regular basis, we'd be glad to do it. Because again, it would affect the property that's there if there was a clog or if there was a, an issue with overflow. The first persons, the, the first people that would feel it would be the owners of that property. So again, you're at the, you know, the bottom of a downslope. They want to make sure that that is kept clean. But by no means do we want to, you know, upset, you know, the people of Brisbane. We know it's a very tight-knit group and very proud of, you know, the open space and the mountains and everything that's here. And we want to be part of that community. And we will do everything to, you know, talk to people and, and see that we can do this in a way that is, meets everybody's needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay. Let's bring it back to council for discussion. Who wants to start? It's a list of questions here, so.
Yeah, I've got some questions as well.
Clark, maybe we could have the staff. There were a lot of very specific questions that were not previously answered. Maybe we could get some of those addressed.
Yeah, okay. I have a list, Randy, of stuff and-
I'm happy to go through your list, sir.
Okay. Anybody else can jump in in case I missed, missed stuff. There was a statement about, they build that people are going to want a hundred-foot buffer zone. I didn't quite get that, that was-
I didn't either, sir.
Yeah.
I don't know that's in reference to.
Could I make a comment on that?
Yeah.
I think some of the fire department regulations are saying that from a hundred-foot defensible line, the buffer zone for fire that goes up into the habitat is, is requested in some of our fire codes, I think, as I've seen before on, I don't think they've been enforced in the acres necessarily, but it, it does talk about that.
No, probably anywhere else in town, ma'am, in the upper streets, as you know. But if, so if this project is going to go forward and if there is a building permit that's going to be approved, certainly part of the review is going to be the fire department and the fire marshal. So in some cases, it's possible. And I, and I'm not clicking on the hundred-foot buffer. That may in fact be one option, but that's not the only option. It's, it's similar to when you have stairs that you're trying to put in on the side of your house, but you're within the setback and it puts it too close to your neighbors. So rather than allowing you to put in wind stairs, they require you to put in concrete stairs. So in this case, if I understand correctly, what the applicant has been proposing, it's a tilt-up concrete building. So putting a tilt-up concrete building is not going to require a hundred-foot buffer. There may be some other requirements that the fire marshal would put on it. Certainly the interior sprinkling is going to be triggered automatically. I don't know if there's going to be anything on the exterior, so I can't comment on that. But it's not the only solution. It, it's one of different ways that you can resolve that.
Dana had brought up numerous things about when did we have the public process and analysis and study sessions of any ecological values up there? And I know-
You're discussing the item on an openly agendized agenda, sir. I mean, this is, this is the opportunity for the public to be aware of it and to comment on it.
Yeah. And I guess the point was, we didn't have a formal public hearing, but, you know, we kind of opened it up to the public to, to take the feedback. Also, is there a PG&E easement that goes through there?
I, I don't know the answer to that, sir. There are power lines on the far side, on the westernmost side of it, so I imagine that there is. That they have a, some pre-existing right? That's not a, there's not a plan to expand across the channel, though. So that's on, that's on the far side. It's not on the building side of the channel.
And-
So, I'm sorry, that means that there's not a PG&E easement that would, that affects this property that we're selling?
No, ma'am. What it means is that this building's expansion is not going to affect any easement that might or might not be on the other side. Because they're, they're not going to go beyond the edge of the ditch that's closest to their property right now. And the PG&E lines is on the other side of that ditch.
And they don't have a clearance?
Well, they're not going to build across it because they can't, you can't keep it, they're not going to demolish it. They have to keep the V ditch in place. That's why there are maintenance requirements for it.
Okay.
In other words, this, I think was before your time, but I kind of recall what Dennis was talking about, Dennis Bussie, about when Byright wanted to purchase that property, that there was a, a 12-foot city right-of-way that was left open or?
No, that, that brings some historical bells with me also. And I'm not sure if Dolby didn't also try to make a similar purchase. The difference between those properties and the property in question today is that if we ever built out that piece of the trail, that we, the piece of the former railroad spurs we didn't have, you could actually connect back behind Byright and the Spencer building and get to Old Quarry Road. So that you could have a piece that literally could go from Old Quarry Road all the way down past Spencer, past Byright, past behind the meat business that's in there now, past Dolby. And you could come all the way up to where it joins our sedimentation basin. And then it curves across South Hill and it drops you into that other trail. That's the upper portion where we thought we were going to put the dog park about 10 years ago and the lowermost portion of its existing trail. So that's why there was concern about that, because that piece goes somewhere. That, that piece really is capable of being created into a continuous loop, unlike this piece, which it has some challenges in access. I, I think Mr. Melby talked about, you know, the legal access kind of above grade. Really, the only other way I, I can see you could continue to use the access would be through that V ditch. And if you've been out there, that V ditch hasn't been maintained in a long, long time. And some of that's been really good because it, it's sort of, through lack of maintenance, mimicked what we've tried to do over at the V ditches. It's done a really good job of slowing down the flow. It's done a really good job of filtering the flow. The water that we get into the sediment basin at South Hill is really some of the cleanest water that we get in our different sediment basins because it's had the opportunity to be scrubbed through natural vegetation. So that's a good thing. So I wouldn't want it completely taken out for that purpose. But unless you completely take it out, you wouldn't have, if you were to retain, say you were to retain this, this land that, that you're being asked to sell tonight. If you retain that and think, okay, well, we're going to use the V ditch, maybe that's the way we're going to hop over there. We'll put a little ladder in or something. If you've been out to this V ditch, it's a pretty steep V ditch. It's not, i- it's not something you just drop down into and then you'd have to crawl, walk along the V. You could do that. I mean, if that, if that's what the council decided, you could decide, well, we're just going to take that out and then we'll have a little ladder on the other end of it. It, it's not the most elegant connection you would have. And I think a lot of the conversation that we have about, you know, some of the future trails and such, there are future trail plans out there and of course, we know that there, there are going to be access later, right? The county has not really moved forward at mock speed in developing all these trails out here and we're all struggling for funds. And I, I would, I would agree with the statements that as far as Crystal Cave, it's one of the toughest ones to get to and to really be parked legally, to be parked on public property. And, you know, I don't want to suggest that it's easy to do anything else. I mean, certainly you could go up and park in the county park and come back down on a wax myrtle. That's not the easiest answer in the world either. So it, it does make it difficult to access a couple of those pieces. And if that's where, you know, a lot of people are going, I, I can see the challenge.
There's also a statement that was made that the water comes down, that's first water off the mountain at that point? I, I don't know.
So the western side of that ditch that the PG&E lines run along, particularly when you are close to the sediment basin, a lot of water comes off there. A lot of water comes off that slope. And in fact, there's a couple of drain pipes that I don't know who installed that are in there. So they discharge. That water all discharges into the creek. It, it discharges into the V ditch. It doesn't discharge into the land that Shenkey would be proposing to build on. That the last time I went on there, that was dry as a desert. And, and as Mr. McIntyre noted in his comments, he, he stated that there were no ecological values. That's San Bruno Mountain Watch's opinion, at least from their director on it.
Okay. Really, that's kind of about the gist of, of what I've got on my notes. So is there some stuff that I didn't capture? Somebody else captured? Want to ask to Randy?
Yeah, I have my own questions. And I think from, from what the public had, well, I mean, it'll be kind of tied into what the public had said, but-
Okay, go ahead.
Is that all right? Okay. Okay, sure. Randy, can you put this picture back up on the screen, please?
The microphone is really loud.
It, it is really loud, so yeah, if you can kind of tone that down, too. Some feedback.
Makes me wonder if mine's on.
Yes, ma'am. Is that the picture you're looking for, sir?
No. It's the bigger one. There you go. That's it.
Got it.
Okay. And in the staff report, Randy, it talks about that, I'm assuming that it's you and your staff that you met with employees from the San Mateo County Parks Department and, or Parks and Recreation Department. And that their overwhelming response was that the county parks would be interested in assisting the city with any efforts to implement trail and trail access projects that are shown on the park's existing land use or in its master plan.
That's exactly correct, I'm sure.
Okay, so then, you know, looking at this map here. So, so the council has seen the, the master plan.
Right, the parks plan.
And proposed trails.
Trails, correct.
For that. You know, I'm going to, you know, ask if you, if you have a pointer and perhaps if, if you can remember like where that trail was. I mean, I have a, a good idea where-
I, I don't have a pointer here, sir, certainly not with enough watts to reach that. But my, my general recollection is that the line, so as you come away from, if you're, you stay parallel to the property we own and you come away from that and you see the next red line that ends the limit, that's, that's the end of, of the, of the current McKesson property. It, it follows along that path. It's that high up. It's that far away.
Okay.
So in that, in that path, we generally come along.
Is about, is it like in the, like in between both our property, but in between the both, both red lines? It's closer to the, the edge of the McKesson property.
At this level of engineering, I'll, I'm not going to quibble with you on that, sir, if that's your recollection. I don't have it clearly in my mind.
Okay. And, and I mean, the reason I bring it up is that, you know, because when we had our, our closed session meetings in regards to dealing with real estate transactions, you know, we, we looked at other options for trails. Because I mean, here you have this, this trail access that is, that has some challenges to it. So how do you, you know, perhaps, you know, are there opportunities to create a better access to a place like Crystal Cave? You know, a lot of folks had talked about that. And of course, I mean, you, you could park in that area at, you know, where, you know, where that catch basin is. And you could walk-
Run along South Hill, right?
Yeah, and then you could walk on the street and go up Park, is it Park?
If you're trying to, you go up West Hill Drive and then West Hill Place to get to the- If you're trying to, you go up West Hill Drive and then West Hill Place to get the building all the way to the end, yes.
You could park there and just walk on the street, and then access the trailhead from there.
And, and if the city wanted to, the city could negotiate an, an access easement across that property, with that property owner to get in there, sure.
So the county has, is, in their master plan, has put this, this trail in, is, is a potential trail in the county park system?
Yes, it's one of the identified plans in their, one of the identified trails in their master plan, sir.
And, and, I'm going to ask your opinion. What do you think is the reason why that hasn't been implemented?
Cash, lack of funds.
Is money?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. And then, you know, let's see. You know, talking about, you know, having that public engagement, and I know that you, you've, you've mentioned it, you know, I, I think what you have highlighted is, you know, is potential good plan for getting the public engaged with this property. You know, perhaps, you know, if this is something that we plan to do, you know, having a subcommittee, or having, actually, you know, more, more of a committee, kind of like the Sustainability Committee, where you have a couple of council members, you have a member of Open Space and Ecology, Park and Rec, and the, the Streets Committee. You know, and perhaps having, you know, someone from Mountain Watch also on that, on that committee, and really looking at, you know, potential uses for the funds. I mean, I, I think, you know, Ken McIntyre talked about Land for Land, and, you know, he, he made a very strong point. I think that should be one of the things that, that, that we could talk about as far as using this money for this property. I mean, I, personally myself, I like trails, and this is a trail, and I'd like to see that money used, if we go through with it, doing some kind of trail enhancement in our town. You know, perhaps we, you know, you, you know, is it kind of like taking a, like a, I don't know, like a business perspective on it, you know, you have this money, and how do you take this money and use it to acquire more funding? How do you, money, how do you, how do you use it to leverage, you know, to have greater funds for trails and, and, and open space? And so, you know, once you have a master plan, then you can use that. You have something, then you can go out there and get that grant, or partner those funds perhaps with the county. So, you know, so as I'm, you know, I mean, that, that's, these are my thoughts that are going through my head, as I'm looking at, you know, potentially, you know, moving forward with, with selling this property. You know, and then, and then just looking at the value of the land. I mean, I've been out there lots of times. It's, it's, you know, I think from an open space perspect, perspective, it's, it's, it's not very high value, but as a business piece of property, yeah, I see it very valuable, and I can see, you know, why the, the owners would be interested in purchasing it. It makes, I think, a good financial sense for them. I don't want them to move. I'd like to have them stay in Brisbane, and it probably makes sense for them to do that, you know, by doing this, by buying this property and, and expanding their, their building. So, you know, I, I see that being a win-win situation for, for the city as well. So, yeah. So just kind of looking at it from, from all kinds of different perspectives, I, I see this being very good for the city. That, that's all I have right now.
Randy, how would a, how would an easement work with regards to the V ditch maintenance or inspection? How would that work on, as far as if we sold this parcel?
So, so the parcel is being, is being proposed to be sold in fee to Shane Key, and they are assuming a duty to maintain it to the city standard. And as part of the agreement, what they do is they give us the rights to come in and access it and inspect that inspection, and ensure that it meets our standards. And, and frankly, that's to our advantage to leave it somewhat vague, because it allows us to establish the standards working jointly with them, as opposed to trying to pin down something right now, particularly in the light of the ever-changing requirements we have from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. I, I wouldn't want to pin something down today and then find out next year when the new municipal regional permit is issued, that what we've required as a maintenance standard doesn't meet the standard, that we're forced to live under, and it's working as part of our storm drainage system.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Terry?
Could I, just that question?
I'm sorry, sir, could you lift your mic a little? I'm having a little trouble hearing you. Thank you. Just pick it up a little. It's down too low.
I wanted to dovetail on that question that Clark had, which comes from Clara's comments. She was concerned about our continuing to have a proper overview of what goes on there over a period of time?
Mm-hmm.
And, and how does that, you know, get built in? How are we assured of that? That was kind of her question, I think.
Yes.
Or part of her question. And also, you know, suppose the changing standards that you're talking about, you know, require, you know, it to be wider, you know, would it be, make sense to, to make sure that the easement, you know, allows for that, or does it already? How can we be assured that, you know, the maintenance that they're doing, when people kind of forget about things over time, you know, how's that going to be monitored over the long term? I mean, those are all kind of questions that she raised, and I don't know the answer to them.
Sure. Well, well, I think the language, the duty that they're assuming in there adequately covers those, to make sure that we can get in there and inspect it, and that the work's being performed to our standard, and maybe David will want to chime in on that later if, if that's not satisfying others. The question about the capacity of it. So, right now, it's fair to say that that V ditch has a very restricted capacity, and it has a restricted capacity because it's really quite overgrown with vegetation. So you could increase its capacity immediately by removing vegetation completely. That would increase its carrying capacity. Now, the only-
Also, the velocity of the movement of water, which has it-
All of the above. And then, so then you would lose the settling that you have right now, and so that, that's bad for some reasons, and it's good for other reasons. It depends what you're trying to do. Years ago, everybody was just trying to move water. Now people are thinking, ooh, maybe there's some way we could do natural treatment as removing that water at the same time, which is a great idea. The only reason that you would need to increase the capacity of that V ditch would be if upland, so in other words, within the HCP itself, if you were to have development, and all the existing permeable material now became impermeable, because what you've got right now is a status system. Whatever rainfall we're getting is going to hit, and it gets absorbed, and it goes into the ground. And so the way flow picks up is when you build buildings, when you build roads, when you do that sort of thing. So that might possibly do that. That doesn't occur to me to, to be a possibility with the HCP, so that's why I, I had a, I didn't have the same concern that Clara did.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I understand. The property that we were looking at in terms of who owns what up the hill?
Yes, sir.
So McKesson owns the next strip of land up the hill?
That's parallel to our spur, yes, sir. That's correct.
Right. Who owns the property up from that?
You got me, sir. I'm sorry. I don't know. I think it's county parks, but I'm not, I don't want to say I know definitively. I, I, it, it could be. I just really don't know. I'd, I'd hate to take a guess, sir.
That's the parcels that are kind of delineated here, at the red, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I believe that it's just foremost McKesson. I believe that they are the only other private property owner, because it's the land, it's all part of that land transfer that's kind of surrounds the outer edge of Crocker. It's eventually supposed to go to the parks, and of course, I think Clay has been privy to a lot of those conversations with the HCP, that part of the conversation with the parks is the parks doesn't want to transfer until foremost McKesson has removed all the invasive species.
Right.
And at this point in time, foremost McKesson hasn't really been interested in spending the amount of money it would take to do that. So it's a little unsettled yet as to when that's going to happen.
Catch 22.
Yeah.
It's, it's awkward, right? Nobody wants to take it on if it's, you're going to have to put a bunch of dough into it when you're already short money to just put the trails in. So you don't want to take something, the first thing you need to do is go through and rip out all the invasives.
Any other questions, Randy?
That's it for now.
Lori?
So, let's see. There were a few other questions, I think, I heard from the public that haven't been answered yet. Someone had asked, well, has the county been approached to be given their first right to purchase the land?
No.
Okay.
I wasn't aware that the county had any requirement for a first right of refusal on this, and I don't believe there's any such requirement.
Okay. And if we were to, to approve of this, and then, in terms of where the public could park for access to getting up onto the mountain, so the public, can you confirm for me whether the public, they can park on South Hill Drive and then walk up that other road, what is it, Park?
West Hill Place.
West Hill Place. And then, do we currently have any easements in place?
We do not.
Private property owner?
We do not.
Okay.
We do not. We could, we could, we could ask for it. We could go look for it, and if you want to park on West Hill Place, just let me know.
Is there parking available on West Hill?
There's not. Well, there's some limited parking for Coon and Nagle. That was put in under a permit about two years ago, but if, if the council's got desires on where you want to have trail access, just let me know. I, part of the reason why we don't normally allow parking out there in the industrial park is, it's my understanding that when the city took it over, there was a planned development, and there was a vision for it, and that vision, I, I will suggest, in, in my professional opinion, is a little bit outdated right now, that the vision from 20, 30 years ago had these long manicured lawns, it had these very large, very wide travel lanes, it had a sidewalk just on one side of it, it was designed to be no parking, to discourage storefronts leading up from the property, and, and so we can change, the council can change any of those things that you like. So if you were to say that, let's say we pass this deal, and you say, hey, Randy, we're going to have you and these other committees and commissions, we're going to do this, or we're going to have a, a committee like Mr. Lentz talked about and do that, but number one, go to that business and get us an easement across there, and put some parking on West Hill Place, and say, parking reserved for recreational trail users only. Done. Council can do that. And then you don't have to walk all the way from South Hill.
Right, right. Of course, that would, that would cost money. We'd have to purchase the easement, right? Or-
It's a small easement. It's a small thing.
Okay. And then, in terms of the, the V ditch maintenance, it seems like what you, what you've said, we, we want to have some ability to, we don't want it to be, to be too specific at this time, but at the same time, the way it's written, it sounds like, I, I look back at the, the language in the agreement, and it just says that it has to be properly maintained and functional. And, you know, my concern there is that, well, then what happens if Shane Key, that, you know, they don't really know what, they're not in the business of maintaining drainage canals. They're, they're in the baking business. So what if they then go in and, you know, take out all the vegetation, and there's nothing in the agreement that says that that's improper? So, you know, I understand that we don't want to make it too specific, but I, I think there needs to be a mechanism so that they're not just using their own judgment, that they need to, you know, they need to know what the standards are for this.
But some language that says they, they don't do any maintenance work without having first consulted with the Director of Public Works?
Yeah.
Something like that? Maybe, I'm sure David could-
Right, to show what, what they're going to do before-
I'm sort of looking over at the broker and the, the property owners to see if Mr. Melby and Mr. Cow have any objections to including some sort of language like that. So you say you don't do any maintenance in the V ditch until you consult with me first, or whoever, or whoever my successor is. There we go.
Well, Mark, if you're going to-
Yeah, let's, let's, let's let engage you in that third party, because they can't hear your recording. That's why. So for the people on TV.
Sure. And, you know, up, up at the ridge, we actually, made me think about the, where I live, we have V ditches that we have to maintain for our own properties, but we're supposed to clear them completely, and they're subject not to, they're subject to inspections, and actually, the inspector came around from, from the homeowners association, inspector came around and, you know, wrote letters to a number of homeowners, I think including myself, saying, you know, reminder, friendly reminder, you have to, you know, clear your V ditch, because it, the water needs to flow, so that there's no backup. But there, it's supposed to be cleared completely, and I think it's not just, it's, it's more than just annual. So I'm, I'm wondering if, you know, an annual inspection is, is enough? Maybe we want to consider making it more frequent, like quarterly, or?
Ma'am, I, this is what I do for a living. I'm satisfied with annual.
You are?
It'll be adequate. Yes, ma'am. That's, that's all we do, our storm drains, is we inspect them manually.
Okay.
But thank you for considering it for me. I appreciate the extra language.
Sure. Well, if, I, I'd feel comfortable, I guess, with your suggestion, then, that there be review by the city before any vegetation is cleared, to make sure that it's not totally taken out. And then, you know, in looking at the map of that parcel, the, the one area that, that concerns me is when it gets close to the road, where there's all the trees.
Mm-hmm.
I actually do walk along that road quite a bit, and I get, you know, it's all buildings, and then you get to that spot, and it's, it's really nice, because it feels more like you're right up against the mountain. And I'm wondering whether those trees would then be completely cleared? Is that going to be all parking lot, if you look at the vicinity photo?
Sure, the wide view, any of those.
Yeah.
So, I am not the person processing the building permit right now, ma'am, and so what, what the, what the developer, the developer, what, what the applicant and his engineers and architects are going to have to come up with is meeting planning's requirements. So certainly, the planning department requires you to minimize the amount of tree removal that you do, and if you do tree removals, you have to do a replacement elsewhere. But at the same time, they're also going to have to remove enough so that they can meet the city's parking requirements. At the same time, they're also going to have to remove enough so they can install the Regional Water Quality Control Board mandated new development requirements for natural water treatment. And somehow, this is all going to blend together. So I can't answer your specific question as to how they're going to do that with a certain grow of trees, but I know that the planning department is working on that and working with the applicant on it.
Okay, and can, can you explain what has been submitted so far through the planning department?
I've only glanced at it, but my understanding is that it is a 10,000-square-foot addition on the western side of the building, and then the rest of it is primarily parking and the greening that meets our requirements and the regional board's requirements.
Okay. And how far, you said, how wide is that ditch? You said it's 45 feet?
No, the ditch itself is maybe 15 feet.
The, the spur?
Yeah, from, from edge to edge of the ditch. The whole spur, the whole parcel that's, that's proposed to be transferred is on the order of 45 feet.
And is there any portion, and the part that, where, where it starts to join up with the road that is an area where there would possibly be parking? Or, I'm, I'm wondering where the, the canal is located as it gets closer to the road, in terms of, you know, what, what amount of vegetation would be removed?
I'm not sure how to answer your question. I'm trying to make, make sure I get where you're, where you're going with this. So the ditch varies in how far it is from the roadway, because it doesn't follow it in a perfectly parallel path along its curves. But where the sedimentation basin is, it's at least 50, if not 100 feet from the roadway. So there would most likely be parking, there's going to be parking on the east side of that. There, there is clearly going to be parking on the east side of that spur.
Okay. Those were the questions I had.
Lori, is, maybe a question is how far it would go down to where southward, how far the parking south would go?
Right, would it be going right up against the-
Yeah, I guess that may be more the question, Randy, is, as you look at the parcel, at least on what's showing up here on the screen, is where it cuts off at that red line that intersects to the green line there. That shows the whole parcel.
So, so again, so I've only just glanced at the building permit, but-
Yeah.
Let, let me give you a general rule of thumb with people that are spending money. They're not going to spend more money building impermeable- let, let me give you a general rule of thumb with people that are spending money, they're not going to spend more money building impermeable pavement on a structured subgrade than they have to, so the maximum amount of parking they're going to have is going to be dictated on the city's code and requirement for parking spaces. So it's going to extend that far and no further, and that, that's.
And that would relate to the ten thousand square foot?
Exactly, it'd be the ten thousand square foot plus the type of uses, plus the existing, plus the type of uses, and that's how it's calculated, right?
Okay, and so we don't know, uh, exactly what that is, right?
No, I don't, I'm not even sure if the planning department's made those final determinations, yeah, I don't know that they, whether or not they've made those calculations.
Okay.
Yeah, it's even conceivable that, you know, there, there's a row of vegetation that we would like to preserve, and we could say, okay, we'll give a, uh, consider giving a variance for the number of parking spaces in order to preserve that foliage, I mean, that's at least an option.
That, that is an option, yes sir.
All right, that's, that's sort of where I'm going, I think, you know, not just preserving, I mean, I understand the idea of the trail not having the access, but I think it also has value as providing foliage for people who are walking along South Hill Drive.
No, no, I understand what you're saying.
Quite a few people out there on the weekends, you know.
That's a nice area, that's actually the area that, uh, years ago when that family of foxes was living up at the quarry, that's where they used to come out late every afternoon, so, like, I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Terry, you got, let me a question, or?
Um, I do have some questions. I think everything that, uh, the fellow council members and staff have brought up has been very important, and what the public's brought up's been important. And looking at the, you know, what we describe as a V ditch, there's very different ideas of what a V ditch is and what it can be. And we've seen that with the property that's next to the Cypress Building, where a V ditch has been turned into a natural waterway and is, has its benefits, and it also has its issues when it comes to the property owner and the wetlands, and whether it, it's damaging to the building, or whether it's a bonus, or who's going to come through and clean it, and whether a perfectly scoured V ditch is a good V ditch, or a overgrown, slowed down V ditch is a good ditch. And up at the northeast ridge, when it was thought about and, and what came about was that they were going to have riparian waterways and frog ponds, and this was all going to be good, and then we have people coming through with power washers, power washing every speck of dirt and frogs out, and which is the normal, and what's the good way to do it? We have differing things, one person's told, clean your ditch, and another person said, you know, let your ditch fill with some dirt and slow down the water, and, and so it's a really gray area, and we see, you know, walking Quarry Road, we see that one idea of maintaining a V ditch is to scoop it out and then put sandbags every fifteen feet to slow down the water and, and reduce the turbidity. You know, the, the solids that are in the water when they have heavy rain, rain events. So, I think there's a, a lot of different ways to approach what's a good V ditch or a properly maintained V ditch and what's not. I do think that the public should deserve to have some input on this rather than such a quick notice that they don't get an opportunity to really come with thoughts that, of what this land could be used for otherwise, and what it could be used for now. I know that we as a council has had a little bit more time to think about it and to think about options, and think about, you know, the three hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of money that could be put to good use. You know, and has a very good possibility to put, be put to good use, and we can't really discuss what that use is here um, because it's not on our agenda. But one of my concerns is that the area to the west, that's also a trail spur line. That's going to now have less value because it's even more cut off from the possibility of continuing that. And so, that would give us the impression that this could also be for sale. Um, and while that's a separate issue from the parcel that we're looking at being up, you know, for possible sale, what would be the harm if we just let that one go also? And I can see where that could be an impression that's given, just like these, these prospective buyers wouldn't have thought that it was possible to do this, except that the FW Spencer Building had already taken some of that property and made our property less valuable as a trailhead or as a trail access point. So, that worries me. I think that if we were to, um, let the public have a little bit of time with this, and I'm not sure, I don't think that we would get more information on the master trails or what's possible, but I think that if we could have an overlay of what the master trails look like, or what the project that's being proposed would look, look like, or what a V ditch management would look like, that we might be able to engage the public a little bit more on this. Um, or reassure the public more about the intentions of the funding, the intentions of how we could still have access, what's going to be cut down to be able to build the project, what's going to need to be, you know, done to be able to implement the transition from one property owner to another. Again, one of my big questions is what's a property, proper V ditch? And having seen the gamut, um, in a storm event, um, I would like to sort of know, and on the other, the portion where we've, don't have the continuation property, what are their responsibilities on the V ditch that's above this property? Do we, do we have any?
You mean the Spencer property?
Yes.
They don't have any. We, we own the V ditch, and we've just got that small little access area, and it's our responsibility to get in there and maintain it, ma'am.
So, the red property line that, or the line that shows on our map is not their property line, their property line is really on the, um, north side of the V ditch?
That's correct. It's my understanding that we have an easement through there.
So if we.
So it's our responsibility to maintain a V and easement.
But it's a, an easement only for the V ditch, not an easement for egress where we could continue the public, do we have the twelve foot wide right of way there?
Well, you, you have an easement that, that the V ditch fits in, ma'am, and I'd have to pull the documents that the city required back in ninety-five or whatever, read that exact easement. I, I would suspect that because it's a V ditch, that that's all that's in there, that you're not going to see an easement to allow public ingress and egress and travel across there, because it's just not, you don't walk on the bottom of a V. So I, I, I can't imagine that it would have been imagined that way. It's possible, but I don't have it in front of me, so I, I don't want to tell you I know the answer when I don't.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you from my history is, walking up on San Bruno Mountain, there's been times when I've traversed the V ditch because that was the um, path of least resistance because of poison oak or terrain, or, or whatever I was trying to avoid or not avoid at that point, and so but if we have a twelve, you know, if depending on the width, it could be, and what our right of way or our easement states, I think that could make that continuation there possible.
Oh, sure, you could build a bridge across it. I mean, I'm, I'm serious, I'm not, I'm not trying to be lighthearted, I'm, I'm saying if that is something that you're absolutely bound and determined to do, there's no reason you couldn't put some wooden walkway across that to span that. I mean, once you're at the top of the V ditch, you're at the top of the V ditch, and, and I'm sure that even this owner wouldn't object. I'm sure that the owner is trying to buy the property right now, if we said, hey, look, if, if we ever come back and decide we want to do that, any problems with that? I, I, I can't imagine they're gonna. That, that seems like an interesting undertaking, I'm not sure, you know, that the cost of that would be worth the value of what it gets you to, but it, there's a way to do that. I, I frankly think it would be easier to go to the property at the end of West Hill Place and ask him for a very short easement to get from West Hill Place directly to the parcel that we still own, up, up at the northernmost, I think that would be your cheapest solution. And certainly as a, as a public entity, you have lots of interesting options to obtain property for the public good.
Any more, Terry?
No, I think I'll wait and see where this is going.
Randy, um, when you're talking about the, um, easement on West Hill Place, I mean, uh, how would you, um, envision like, uh, say somebody wanted to go to Crystal Cave and they started out down, say here by City Hall, right behind here, crossing the dog park, and wanted to walk up the trail? Right now, you come into a loggerhead and you can't get past that, or you're traversing private property.
Well, so, let's say, so you, you're talking, you're starting at the dog park, and you're wanting to use our improved, uh, Crocker Industrial Park recreational trail, so you can continue on that, generally sort of northwesterly bound. That will take you all the way out to South Hill, right, to South Hill at the bottom of the walkway that comes from Litman? You've got a crossing right there, so go across South Hill, stay on the recreational trail, follow the recreational trail till it comes to a point on South Hill, generally below where our sedimentation basin is, there's actually a trail that's kind of carved in there, it, it, it's hard to see sometimes, but there's, uh, it looked like it used to be auto access because there's a bollard on either end of it, and there's a chain across it, it's back maybe twenty feet from the roadway, so that could be weed whacked out to create a trail, that takes you back up to South Hill, kind of across from the Shen Key property, kind of across from our sedimentation basin, and you'd have to take South Hill up to West Hill Drive, turn left on West Hill Place, go to the very end of that street where there's a cul-de-sac, and again, w- we don't have a public ingress and egress ac- access easement across there, but you could, it's a very short distance, it's a very, very short distance.
Yes.
And if you're only talking about something twelve foot wide, if you've been up there, there's already land on the other side, there's land between the Frito-Lay fence line and the parking lot for this business that's not being utilized right now, that, that, that's not going to be the hardest property acquisition you ever do.
Right, and it's, I could see that on the map on, uh, page, um, one of the pages here.
Did you get to the wider view perhaps?
Yeah.
Yeah, right, as you get to that wider view, when you, you see where I'm at, it's kind of where their property line, where the property line for the business all the way at the end of West Hill Place ends.
Right.
It's perpendicular to that spur we own, there's that little bit of land in there, and that, you can see where the trucks are backed up to their fence.
Right.
Nobody's using that right now.
Yeah, that's just part of it, okay, but they would, uh, come up West Hill, walk, walk all the way up West Hill then?
Sure, sure.
That way, and then traverse, and then hit that into the trail.
Right, it doesn't seem like much of a detour for a determined hiker, sir, that's going to be going up Wax Myrtle Ravine or going up to Crystal Cave. I mean, especially if they've walked all the way from town, if they started at the dog park, that's, that's, they've gone a mile and a half, two miles already.
Right.
And haven't even started climbing, because, I mean, as everyone in here knows who's been up Crystal Cave, Crystal Cave is not a leisurely walk. That's a, that's a bring your machete and climb the ropes and watch where you step, and look out for the stinging nettles, it's
Hope you're not allergic.
It's exciting, it's good to do with youngsters of a certain age.
Very adventurous.
As the city manager discovered, I think I, I think, I, I forgot the poison oak, I dragged the city manager up there when we first started talking about this.
You up there?
Fireman's carry the whole way? You would be both, I'm beyond that too, Dennis.
Any other council clarifications or questions? Ray, anything?
No.
No?
I have a, you know, suggestion as to how we move ahead based on prior council conversation.
Okay.
Wait until you're ready.
Well, bring it forth.
Yeah.
Good starting point.
Yeah, no, it, uh, it seems to me that, uh, what Terry O'Connell was just saying, that though it is the case that at least four of us have had some length of time to, to look at this as a, as a real estate transaction, there really hasn't been a kind of full discussion of all the kinds of options we're just talking about right now, you know, for access and making sure that there's appropriate public quid pro quo, and making sure that the agreement gets us the kind of maintenance we want, and, you know, et cetera, et cetera, and so it seems to me therefore that, that we're not quite ready to move ahead tonight, because it would be useful to have more additional information and, uh, public opportunity, and, and, uh, we need to, to see, you know, what the proposed, uh, expansion is, and whether we want to do something special there, or whether we want to think about, you know, the access through West Hill, is this something we might want to consider as a part of the package of interrelated concerns, so to speak? So I would think that we're not, at least I'm not prepared to, to make a decision this evening, and I would hope that colleagues would agree with me, and, and that, and I know Terry does because you just said so. Uh, and then, you know, bring in some of these other dimensions and give the public another shot at it, to think about all the stuff we're thinking about, and there are a lot of options for u- using this amount of money that would be good for ecological purposes, and maybe they're better than, than this, I don't know, we have to make those kind of decisions at some point. And so I would suggest that we, you know, take this up at a subsequent meeting with that additional information and additional opportunity for public input.
Does that sound doable, stuff?
Well, I, I don't know if it sounds doable or not, sir, I think, um, the applicant ought to, either he or his representative ought to speak to you and let you know what they think about timing and what they think about the proposal to delay this decision, because it, it seems that, if, if I understand correctly, we I, I'm a little, just trying to put it together because it sounds like we're being asked to say, before we can make this decision, uh, the council would want to know to inform the public what other opportunities, what places we might use these funds before the council will have enough information to make the decision. So I, I, I'm not sure how long it's going to take to gather that, I'm not really clear on all the details of that, and i- if, if Shen Key and, and their broker have all the time in the world, then, then that's fine, we'll take whatever time is necessary, but I'd, I'd really like to hear from them before I tell you I think it's doable.
Please, come up. Just give us your name for the record, please.
Uh, my name's Mark, uh, English is my second language, bear with me, uh, I like to speak, uh, for Shen Key. Shen Key Bakery is, uh, we have small business, we like, uh, Brisbane, actually, we moved to, uh, Hayward, only the land cost one third of it. But, uh, back to twenty years ago, we decided to move to Brisbane as our central kitchen, we enjoy the area, and we like the area, we really wish we can stay. And also, uh, you mentioned that wood has, uh, three years been, uh, naturefied twice. The whole hill is being burned, a- actually, that ditch do need to take care, because especially summer, Brisbane's dry. If without, uh, proper care, very easy to have a mountain fire, because, uh, that's my backyard. Scare shit out of me, so close, okay? So close, okay? And I'm, we are part of Brisbane community. I don't want offend any resident, you know, but I like to speak out for Shenkey ourselves. Because my employee been with me 20, 30 years. The reason we stay in Brisbane because they're all neighborhood. I don't want to, they commute between Hayward and here. So, and also regarding about that trail, actually it's not a safety trail. I was falling down from the hill. There's a 45 degree and also hard to climb if for the safety of the city. Please don't advise people climb that mountain, it's not safe. I, you know, so, go back to, since you guys have a question. Actually, we hire engineer, civil engineer, structure engineer, soil engineer. Actually, we consult with them. All those, it's all have a govern law. Setback, 10 feet, how we treat water, how to prevent earthquake. All those engineer put a lot of thought into that already. And also the people sometimes at night, they dump the garbage along the trail. If we say there's a personal property, at least we'd like a guardian can guard the trail for the city. At least they have a car, they have a people there in and out. They dare not to dump a lot of garbage from the bricks, you know, you name it. You know, because even me personally, I clean up stream myself. But anyway, I like to be a good member of the Brisbane, you know, resident. You know, we really wish we can stay in the Brisbane. But just like I mentioned, I don't want to offend any of them. We just have different viewpoints. But as a CEO, you know, we are very practical. You know, just because we have a limited time, we have to make a decision and move on, you know.
What is your time, Mark, as far as?
I really wish, because right now I compete a lot of foreign competitor from Korea, from Taiwan. So I really wish, because right now we have three warehouse outside. It's really drive us crazy. Some box put over here, some flower put over there, you know, so difficult. So we also need the local community to help us to fight. Because we produce one kind of cookie called mooncake. So we ship to New York, ship to Chicago. So, you know, so the timeframe wise, I really wish we can complete within about nine months or a year. And also, we are not acquiring a cost for 300,000. Actually, we put up, built up maybe another $2, $3 million. So in other words, every year have 20 to 30,000 property tax a year contribute to the city. So we want to be a positive member of the community.
So, I guess staff, I mean, taking Ray's suggestion here if this is what we did, is this something we can come back in May and take a look at and move forward from that point?
I would love for the city manager to step in, yes, sir.
I just, I think if we can clarify what it is you want, then we can give you a reasonable time. So here, I'm going to give it, take it a shot and then you can tell me what I got right and what I don't have right. So, we have language to adjust in the agreement to address the public works director's pre-approval on the maintenance. That's a fairly easy thing to do. I think there's a desire to look at the building permit application and the issues and options that come up with regards to that. As I understand, they have an application for the city now, so I think it would be fairly easy for us to bring that forward and kind of outline the different issues and options there. I'm saying that without talking to my community development director, but I'm going to take that as a leap of faith that we can do that. The third one, which I think is much more problematical depending on how you want to approach it, we can come forward and give you kind of an outline on a process for how you would use the funds. But I suspect the process itself would take a fair amount of time and I don't think you could, I don't think it's likely that you would be successful being able to figure out how you're going to spend the funds in a timely fashion for their, for this purchase. But I think you could certainly outline the process by which you're going to do that.
Yeah, and we, the process and some parameters so that the public is comfortable that we're going to use it in an ecologically friendly and responsible way.
Yeah, so, I mean, and just to speak to that.
We won't necessarily get it all nailed down, but we can, you know, have the parameters for that.
So, just to speak to that real quickly, because I was kind of making a mental note of this as we were talking tonight, was that I think what we would want to come back for in the budget this year is actually to have it set up in a specific line item or fund. I'd have to talk to the finance department about how best to do that. And then, similar to the way we did the open space fund many years ago, is we would actually establish an enabling resolution which says, here's the funds, here's how they can be spent, here's, you know, all the things that kind of tie that down. So I think that would be appropriate to do and we would do that within the budget process for this year.
Yeah, so, we could get that done by the end of May.
So I'm thinking if that's satisfactory to the council, I'm sure we can bring this back by, you know, the first meeting of May.
Right.
If I may, the one thing that I also would like to see is the parks master plan sort of overlay where the access would be, you know, where we could see where there could be access or where it ties in to the, to the parks master plan. And granted, those are paper streets, so to speak. They haven't been, a lot of them haven't been implemented and some are probably more viable than others, the thought of where trails may be. But I would just like to give the public an opportunity to see that and envision how this, how it's not going to be detrimental, how we want it to be better. Because we want you to stay in Brisbane and we want you to be a member of the community. And we want to be able to make this viable without offending anyone, you or us.
Yes, that's what we're always trying to do.
So that's what I would like to see and so that we can, and I don't, for me, I don't think it's necessary that we tie down a specific fund because when properties come available, we as a council have tried to make, purchase properties and do what we can and we've done a fabulous job and the prior councils have done a fabulous job. So I don't think that for my comfort level, and it may be more for public comfort level, that we'd need specific funding, tie it down. I don't think that's necessary for my comfort level.
Although that is what you did with the open space fund.
Yep, it is.
I mean, in terms of connecting it historically.
And it was, and it was, it was, that was a commitment. And it was showing a commitment and we did that and we moved forward and then we kind of undid that a little bit during the recession. And the purpose of that was is to at least show our employees too that, you know, that hey, this is going up every 10% each year and yet, you know, we're asking for a reduction in pay for you and this money sits static and so, you know, we need to kind of undo that. But with a commitment that, you know, if open space came, came open, that we would purchase it. So, Mark, we're looking at the first meeting in May to bring this back and I know as a business person that, you know, you want to have a definite answer, but we don't have it tonight and it's a process.
Yeah, I think everybody in all, you know, at least they know what we are doing and especially the building plan in the city. So actually, they have a very detailed engineer, it's all compliance with law. So they have a, I mean, fully document, yeah.
So, okay, so, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, so, clears V-ditch mud? Okay, so we'll go ahead and put this over until the first meeting in May then. And Randy, thank you for all your hard work on this.
Yes, sir, thank you.
You know, give you a little bit more.
One question, so, well, at the meeting in May, are we going to agenda as discussion of use of the funds unlike tonight where we weren't able to discuss that?
Well, it would be one of the items and we would talk about the process by which you would go about making that decision and raise suggestions and some of the parameters around it.
Okay.
I just, my sense is that that's probably a fairly long conversation. It's going to involve the number of, of your own committees.
Right.
In putting into it, so decision-making may be, you know, further out.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that assessment.
The decision will be there, the decision.
Right. That's right, you know, showing potential options, I think is good. Making a decision at that meeting, no.
Right, that's another 10 meetings.
That's another matter.
Okay.
The way we move, that's about 10 meetings worth, so. Okay, all right, let's move on to item B, which is consider approval of resolution number 2014-06 adopting the first amended joint exercise powers agreement with San Mateo Operational Area Emergency Service Organization. Randy, I guess you're up tonight again, huh?
Still in the batter's box, sir. So, emergency services is provided in the state of California under various state laws. One of those laws requires that we all be organized into different areas, into hierarchical areas. So that starts at the state. There are then regional areas. There are then operational areas, which in California are defined as the counties. And then there are the local cities, agencies, tribes, whatever have you. In San Mateo County, we're all bound together by a joint powers authority that talks about our duties and responsibilities. There's a lot of things that that JPA does in addition to providing those emergency services and those training. That's how we get the hazmat response folks that are out of here. That's how we get some of the work in coordination with the airports, et cetera. For the purposes of tonight, though, what we're trying to do is nail down the amended joint powers authority for this operational area. That came about for a couple of reasons. Number one, the last revision that was done on this was 1997 and it's interesting if you look back at that resolution, we had the same seated mayor at the time who signed that one and now here we are many years later.
All deja vu all over again.
Thank you, Mr. Barra. So, yes, indeed.
Except now I'm the representative.
And now, and now he's the representative, but still the seated mayor. So I do want to get this done before Mr. Conway tenure as mayor ends. I have high hopes for this one. And the second thing, of course, is since the tragic events of 9/11, there have been a lot of changes in how emergency services are provided throughout the country. There's been a number of presidential security directives that have been signed. There's been a lot of language that's been signed. Ms. Lou noted in her review of the staff report that we use the term certs now. And that happened a number of years ago. When I first came here 13 years ago, organizations had their own names. Brisbane was one of the first ones to come about in this area. They were CEVs. Up in San Francisco, you had NERTS and down in Palo Alto, they had my favorite, which was the pandas. That was absolutely, I thought that was cute as heck. I mean, that really got people's attention. We're the pandas, we're that Palo Alto Neighborhood Disaster Assistance Group. It's great. But in the intervening years, as all these homeland presidential security directors have come about and all of this interoperable requirements have come about, there have been many new issues that have come up. So now we're all certs, it's a national program, it's a regional program, it's a local program. We're all on the same sheet of music. And lastly, is that, I know certainly Mr. Conway's aware, that OES staff tends to rotate every two to three years and people come in and they have a new focus. And so one of the things they did was look back and say, hey, jeez, what are we really supposed to be doing? What's, what's our, what's the enabling legislation that tells us our job and your job? And the document in 97 was a little rough and it's even rougher because one of the things I understand did not happen is didn't get recorded with the state. So we're not officially a legal JPA, whatever that means, whatever harm that befalls us or doesn't befall us, as the case may very well be. So, what happened as a result of that, all that information was kind of mushed together, brought to the emergency services council and they directed staff to start working on a rewrite of this. And they've done the rewrite and it's a passable job. There are still some pieces that need to be redone. I've had that conversation with the director of OES, with Captain Weiss. There are pieces such as whether we really ought to be doing annual reporting on our attainment of certain goals and stuff in a public meeting before the entire ESC. I'm not sure that everybody ought to necessarily do that. I have some philosophical concerns about that. There is some conversation about some language that was put into the JPA when we first started talking about having this conversation. There's a reporting document that was used statewide, it's called NIMSCAS. NIMSCAS has been dead for months. The state ran out of money to fund it, but it's still in the document, so that, that looks a little awkward. And there's just, there's a myriad of little tiny details like that. But we think it's important enough right now, and I think Mayor Conway will agree with me, that we need to get the JPA approved and ratified so we can get it sent off to the state, we can get it recorded, we can be a legal JPA. We need the updates that are in there, that's important language and it's good to have a current understanding of what it is we're doing. There's actually some of the pieces that I really like in there is that we've got an emergency management support team concept that's, that's proposed in there. And what that's intended to do is to recognize the fact that if you have a big enough event here, as we've seen with the fire on San Bruno Mountain, you can get a ton of firefighters here, you can get a ton of cops here, that's great. But if you start to have an extended event, the ability to run your own EOC right now is limited. It's, we have done very, very little training on that of late, we've been down staff. It just hasn't happened. It hasn't been something, it hasn't been the alligator that's been closest to me. So, and we are not the only city in that position. And so the concept that the emergency managers came up with, what if we all decide that we're going to have, based on our population share, whether it's one to three staff members that work on this EMST and we train during the year? And if somebody who's participating in that has a localized incident and they need assistance, we all agree that we're going to go there. And it's, and it's an optional system, so there are some agencies out there that are very flush, that have a real full OES staff, that are people that are training on a regular basis. They might say, you know what, we've decided to put our money into this, we're not going to participate in that, thank you. There are agencies, certainly all of the smaller agencies would say, oh my, yes, we're going to send the bodies we need. That's just good insurance, sending the staff out to do that. So there's some really good pieces to this. There are some pieces that I believe some members on the ESC believe still need to be changed and need to be worked on over the next year. Captain Weiss has guaranteed that we're going to do that over the next year. So, we're recommending that you approve that resolution tonight and get us signed back onto this and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Yeah, and actually, actually, we've brought up most of the changes at the last meeting, but a few of the cities have already adopted it. So it kind of makes it really awkward to request the changes now that they adopted it and then it would have to go back, they would have to ferret through it. So, it's kind of a, one of those things that, okay, we can, we can live with this and then go back and then fix it next year as long as we have guarantee of the staff that we're going to address it again to bring up these little quirks. So, I mean, when you got 20 cities out there, it makes it a little difficult sometimes, you know, so.
So no nitpicking allowed at the moment?
Right. It's not going to, yeah, we, yeah.
Well, we could do that to inform our representative.
Yeah.
We'll be happy to collect your nits, ma'am.
Go ahead, Terry, since you brought it up.
She got it, you have any?
I'm, I'm ready to approve resolution 2014.
I'm ready to second it.
I have just a couple of very quick nits.
Sure.
And I guess this is kind of the question of the political dynamics here. I noticed that it's presumed that the chair would normally be the representative from the county board of supervisors.
Correct, yes.
How's that going down with the other cities or is that sort of comfortable with everybody? Or what's the politics of that?
I'll let the mayor answer that.
They seem okay with it. I mean, you know, nobody's really challenging that as far as, as far as that goes. I mean, really all, the chair is Adrian, Adrian Tissier, and she just runs it like, like a regular meeting of what we do here. Questions, answers, you know, that type of thing. So, seems to work okay. But, you know, and that might be because of Adrian's style, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but working fine.
Well, it certainly seems to be convenient as well, sir, just because, so you've got a, you've got a county supervisor and it's county staff that she's working directly with and also because... with. And also because the county is the operational area and has specific responsibilities in the whole emergency management system process. From that perspective, it sort of makes sense for that person to be the chair and not to rotate it through. It would be awkward if, even if Mr. Conway were the chair and he were directing county staff to do things. It's probably awkward enough for the sheriff to have his staff being directed by a supervisor rather than through him, so.
No, I was just curious, because I remember in the past, there've been occasions when there was sort of, kind of a built-in animosity between cities in the county, and they would not have been happy with this as a, as a part of the agreement. But if it's working, I mean, that's fine, because they are putting up most of the staff and resources, so.
Yeah, I'm not.
Makes sense from that point of view.
Yeah. I'm not seeing that, that type of resentment. Of course, these are all new people, you know, I say new in the last fifteen years. Yeah, so, I mean, the dynamic's different. I mean, you know, the county supervisors who are on there now are not the same supervisors that were there thirty years ago.
That's for sure.
So, I mean, there's, there's a different dynamic. And so, you know, I think, I think it's more positive.
Yeah, that's good to hear. I'm glad to hear that. I mean, it's much better that we're working together rather than at odds, you know. Okay, so I have one other, a very small nitpick. At the bottom of the resolution, we should update it because we're not passing it on March seventeenth, but April seventh.
Still scrolling my way down memory lane, sir.
That's all the, all the way to the last bit.
Yes, I, yes, sir. Thank you for waiting for me.
Okay. Lori, any questions?
Oh, that was it. I'm sorry. I thought you had one more thing you were going to give me. We have to update.
Update.
I don't have any questions. I had asked staff earlier some questions about, you know, what the other issues were that remained to be resolved. And Randy spoke to that. And I guess the one question I did have, which I don't know if Randy wants to take a stab at this, is, you know, what happens if there's a disaster in Brisbane, who, you know, under this proposed agreement responds? If it's, does it matter whether it involves Brisbane or is it countywide? I just wanted to know how the sharing of responsibility works.
Sure. Well, San Mateo County is particularly unique in that we all really do respond to each other. It's almost as if we don't have borders once things start to become a disaster. On the one hand, that's a real blessing. The only thing that that's bad about, quite frankly, is that it really doesn't give us a great opportunity to train our cert programs. Because what happens is oftentimes you have localized incidents. And even when it's a really horrific incident, like the San Bruno gas explosion, there were more firefighters and policemen there than anybody knew what to do with. And so the opportunities to bring your cert people in to do things really ended up relegating them to roles where they were becoming phone answers. And, and I'm not sure how we're going to get around that challenge. That, that's, that's a problem. But the reality is, is that the whole emergency management system now has been tailored so that it's intended to be flexible and expandable, so that you can quickly go from a small incident to a big incident by assigning new roles, by creating subcategories under the different sections and such. And because everyone's required to be trained in it, we can roll in and we can integrate with each other very easily. So what you'll see typically, I want to say that in San Mateo County, it's a second or a third alarm, whichever one of those, county office emergency services automatically responds. So they will automatically, they've got this giant communications van that's got a lot of high-speed equipment in it. They automatically roll out to see if they can help. But even on second alarms, they'll come out. So they're on duty all the time. They're monitoring what's going on with dispatch. Frankly, I think in a lot of cases, they have been the backfill in the lack of training that's gone on in many of the local EOCs when we've had emergencies or near emergencies. County staff has just stepped in and said, look, we'll help you run that EOC. And they just do it. And they've really done a fabulous job, and I've got a lot of respect for them as a result of that. But I think it's really good that what we're talking about doing now is making sure that we can kind of self-help ourself. Because my concern is that when the big regional disaster hits, if you're an agency that doesn't have any trained people, well, you're going to be on your own. Just like we tell our citizens, you know, prepare for seventy-two hours to five days of being on your own, having those supplies. We really mean being on your own. You know, we really mean that unless you're burning or bleeding to death, you're like a low priority. So be prepared for that. And we have to take that same responsibility. We've got to have our continuity of government, and we've got to continue to do that and just, and prepare for what we need to do. So it's an integrated role. It works. The plan works. It's a little confusing when you first start to deal with it, because if you don't have sort of that military or paramilitary understanding of how organizations are set up, it seems very siloed, but it's not. It actually works quite well. Did that answer your question, ma'am, or did I just ramble?
Yes.
Okay.
And how, how many CEVs or certs do we have in Brisbane currently?
Active, probably a dozen. On the rosters, fifty to sixty.
Okay. And I think I'm on the emergency services subcommittee with Clark, and we had talked about, you know, kind of beefing that up and, you know, reaching out to find out who in our community has, you know, medical or nursing backgrounds. And if they're not on duty already, how we can utilize their skills. So.
The whole litany of things, you know. I mean, like Chiang Chi Bakery here, I mean, we got a lot of food sources here. If we're ever cut off from the world, no, really. I mean, it's, you know, we got pit.
Mooncakes for everyone.
My, yeah. Yeah, there's a lot, you know, Del Monte meats, yeah, bakers of Paris. I mean, and the guys behind us, Lettieri, A.J. Calderoni. I mean, it's kind of becoming our forte as a food.
We could be eating pretty well if cut off from.
We just need to get a wine bar in here, sir. I think that would be.
Any other questions? So Terry, I'm going to take your, I'm prepared to make a motion as a motion. And Cliff, you're prepared to make a second as a second. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose? All right, very good. Let's see, we're ten twenty-seven right now. So got a little bit to go through to just wish to extend the meeting. We want to make a motion to extend it for, what, fifteen minutes?
Second.
It depends on whether you want to take a break or not.
Does anybody want to take a break?
Fifteen minutes, I'm okay.
All right, of course, true. All right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, motion.
You made the motion, I second.
Okay, I made a motion. All right, for, to go to quarter to eleven, or ten forty-five, and Cliff, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Okay. Item C.
You just can't beat me down, sir.
No, no, we.
I'll take this one, too.
Back tonight.
So, so let's take a little trip down the lane of how you set speeds in the state of California. So there are a handful of prima facie speed limits. These are laws that are set by legislation, and it tells you that's always what the speed is there. In an alleyway, pop quiz, fifteen miles an hour, that's your max speed limit. That's prima facie. In a residential area, twenty-five. Posted school zone, twenty-five. Senior housing posted, twenty-five. And then we come to the infamous maximum speed law in the state of California, sixty-five miles an hour. That's the maximum speed law, okay? So in general, with the exception of those areas and those speed limits, speed is set under requirements in the California vehicle code called an engineering and traffic survey. So an engineering traffic survey has lots of requirements, but basically, we go out there, and for a twenty-four hour period or so, we measure all the vehicles coming down a road, going both ways, going AM, going PM. We make sure we do it in appropriate weather conditions. So, you know, we don't go out and try and force the speed down, like when it's really pounding and hailing out. Make sure it's a regular day, an average day, if you will. And then we compile all the data. We know, with our little counters, we can tell you how many trucks and how many cars and how many motorcycles there were. We haven't figured out how to measure those tricycles yet when they start coming out, those types of vehicles, but we're working on that. And then they apply a rule that presumes that eighty-five percent of the driving population is driving at a safe speed for that roadway in the conditions. And that's probably not a bad assumption. If you think about the people you know in life and the people you drive with, ten to fifteen percent, eh, marginal maybe, but eighty-five percent of the population is driving at a safe speed. So they create the eighty-fifth percentile. And then there are some only, some very, very minor adjustments that the engineer who's going to sign the report.